To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody's involved. All right. Amy, can you take the roll call?
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Keeksord.
Here.
Mr. Detsel.
Here.
Mr. Heather.
Here.
Mrs. Talby.
Here.
Okay, just to recap our mission statement, Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success. And that brings us to 4.1.
And that's a great segue because we have Struble here tonight, who co-principals Karen Grayson and Trey Richman are going to share some highlights from Struble Elementary about how they are doing that exact thing about guiding students on a pathway to success.
It's just a clicker.
Well, thank you so much for having us tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to be here in front of the board to share some of the successes that we've experienced so far this year. As Daryl said, I'm Karen Grayson, proudly serve alongside Trey Richman as co-principals at Struble Elementary.
So let's just say that we're going to share a year review highlighting some of the, a few of the successes at Struble. As everyone knows, and we've seen, this has been a tough year for not just students, staff, but just the country as a whole. The students and staff have been resilient with anything we've asked and they've put in front of them. So we're very proud of where we've come from, August of 2021, to where we are now. Through this presentation, we're going to highlight three areas: school culture, student achievement, and then our coaching model that we put in place for this school year.
So we'll start with school culture. We truly believe that this is a strength for us at Struble. We've delved into a lot of work around PBIS. So we started last summer by forming a PBIS dedicated school team.
Karen, would you tell everybody what PBIS stands for?
Positive Behavior Intervention Supports.
Okay.
And it actually encompasses academic and behavior supports. So we've worked this year to make a lot of headway at our building. Based upon a book that we read, I believe, as a leadership team on school culture about a couple of years ago, we decided to follow what we now call the Blue Jay Way. And the Blue Jay Way is three things. I'm sure Ruby, or Aria, or Nali, and Marco could help with that. We take care of ourselves. That's right, taking care of ourselves, each other, and our school. And all of our work revolves around those three mottos or three ways. You'll hear a little bit more later with our SALT report about PBIS Rewards. Both our school alongside MHE and Corinell have adopted this program this year, and it puts in place some rewards and opportunities for kids to earn, not only tangible items, but experiences. And as I said, we have some students here that are going to share in a little bit, and Mr. Clark, our dean of students, will be introducing that to you in just a little while. We also wanted to remark a moment on our discipline data. Because of the pandemic, all of our buildings are using 18, 19 data, but we've seen a decrease in our discipline referrals. To date, we have seen a 39% decrease from our baseline data. So we really feel at Struble that our PBIS work is working. Developing the common language in our school environment has been wonderful for both staff and students.
And so a big piece of just our school culture is our SEL work, our social emotional learning, and something we're very happy about being able to provide for our students is a six-week special rotation. But every student kindergarten through fifth grade receives 45 minutes of an SEL lesson once every six days, and that's provided by our counselors. We also have small group and individual supports provided by our counselors, individual check-ins that come by Ms. Grayson, myself, deans, other staff members. We're very big believers in building relationships and positive relationships with our students. Because once we have that and have them knowing that we care about them, we'll get the most out of them. We do have a couple outside partnerships that also support with our SEL work. Best Point, which used to be Children's Home, we have two counselors or behavior therapists in the building that work with our students typically weekly, but also as needed. If things come up, they're able to support students and support us trying to help students in the classroom. And then we also have a partnership with the YWCA, and Mr. Jared is in our building two to three days a week, working on small groups, he'll circle classrooms up, just building relationships and helping kids form a family within the classroom, just to help provide them the best supports that we can.
The last piece we wanted to mention under culture was staff morale. And as Trey said, we went into this year expecting a little bit different and found that we were kind of still struggling with some things, residual items from COVID. So we recently did a mid-year survey with our staff and just wanted to share a few things that popped out of us, to us, as we reviewed that. Overwhelmingly, it was positive, but we had 100% of our staff members agree or strongly disagree that they know we care about his or her safety and well-being. 98% of our staff agree or strongly disagree that he or she is comfortable.
Strongly agree.
Did I say disagree? Oh, I'm sorry.
Both of those are agree.
Those are agree.
We were just kind of funny.
I'm so glad you're listening to me!
I was listening the first time, I was like, let's let it go.
Let me start over.
It makes it more interesting.
Agree or strongly agree that he or she is comfortable approaching us with professional or personal concerns. And then 89% of our staff agree or strongly agree that Struble has a positive school culture. So as we continue this work, we know it's not done. We always have areas for improvement, but we're really encouraged with what we've seen this school year from our students and staff.
The next thing we want to key on is just student achievement. We have math assessment within our district, and it's given three times a year, fall, winter, and then spring when it's getting ready, actually just opened up today. But we kind of want to just highlight from our fall to winter math growth, just a couple, just some four key points. And what you're looking at is actually percentiles, not percents, but you say space. So kindergarten, in reading, they went from the 53rd percentile to the 63rd percentile at a grade level. And just to kind of put some context around it, if you make about a year's worth of growth, you would stay roughly in the same percentile, because everybody would typically go at the same rates or at the same rate. So if you're in the 53rd percentile in the fall, you're in the 53rd percentile in the wintertime, you're going at about a grade level, so you stay on a grade level. So our kindergartners, who came in at 53rd percentile, which is very good, moved up to the 63rd, which is awesome. First grade, reading went from 30th percentile to the 37th percentile. In second grade, and I'm just going to throw this out there because at most meetings I say this, but COVID, in my opinion, has hurt the second graders the most. COVID hit in their fourth quarter of kindergarten year. So we're getting letters, blends, we're doing all those things, kind of finalizing all that right for first grade. Then their first graders last year may have been in the building, may have been at home, learning may have just looked different than the past, and they show up as second graders this year. We were in the eighth percentile in reading, and in about four months, moved them up to 21st percentile. And in May, we're in the 13th percentile in the fall and jumped up to 21st. So that's the one grade level I always just like to talk about because I feel like they just missed, could have missed some crucial pieces. We got a lot of interventions in place for them. And then May after fourth grade jumped up from 23rd percentile to 28th. So just wanted to kind of highlight some of those. Another area is the iXL data. That's a website, you know, learning platform that we use in many ways. It could be just practice, but it's a great way for some of our teachers to work with differentiation. They can set different levels within the iXL program based off of the diagnostic assessment that goes inside it, or goes along with our math data as well. There's just some data there that you can kind of see, but we answered 1,496,000 questions this year. And what's funny is we're looking at the data before, and it went up 6,000 just today. Because it was 1,149,000 at like 10 this morning. And I looked at it later, it was up to 6,000 more. So they're in there and they're learning.
The last part of that slide is our LSI work, and I know Trey's going to fast forward just to show a little bit of example of our student collaboration. But that work just really resulted in our teachers making sure that they had clear learning targets and goals, as well as success criteria for our students, to know what they were learning and what the expectations were. And then also, you'll hear a little bit in just a moment about our coaches from Hamilton County, but they've done a lot of work around Kegan structures, collaboration. We all know that students can learn best when they're working together, talking about their learning, and moving through that as a team. So these next few slides just are examples of that teamwork and collaboration that happens at Struble on a daily basis. So this brings us to our coaches. We are very fortunate to have four coaches that work within our building, and you'll hear a little bit from the teacher voice after Trey talks about the plan. But we have an intervention coach, her name is Laura Collier. Our instructional coach is Erin Knox. We have a math coach, Nicole DeSwa, and our tech coach, Steve Phelps. And they have been just amazing with working with our staff. They came in, they knew building relationships was important, and so that was what we first tasked them to do. And from there, relationships have blossomed, they've been able to support teachers with lesson planning, instruction. They want to work with kids from time to time, so they do sometimes work with our students, but it's just been a blessing to have them in our building this year.
Yeah, and the idea is to try to help our teachers this year and the next year, so when the coaches aren't there, that they can learn and carry on these things they've learned over this year and hopefully next year. And a lot of work went in this past summer with creating a schedule that allowed us, as well as the coaches, to work with teachers. So we put in a schedule they go through, some of it's weekly, some of it's monthly. We really want to focus on the relationships, like Karen said, just growth, the data and student achievement, just whatever support they needed, we were tasked with trying to provide it. If we couldn't find it at that point, go out and get it. And we've had a lot of positive feedback from our staff in regards to the coaching model setup. Instead of bringing teachers in here tonight, we've got some testimonials for them, or of them, but I'm not sure how to play that.
Working with the coaches has helped me become more tech savvy, using CC. I'm really engaging with my students, the coaches later, and academics for the students. They really helped motivate and support me as I'm trying to incorporate more team projects and working with my kindergartners, and they've been a source of encouragement and validation that I'm living in the right direction with my instruction.
Hi, I'm Danielle Hager, and I'm one of the first grade teachers at Struble Elementary. Working with the coaches this year has been a really positive experience. I appreciated the opportunity to collaborate with them on reading lessons, specific interventions for students, tech activities, and it was really nice to be able to have an ongoing, consistent support in those areas. They helped us reflect on our instruction and our interventions, which led to greater student achievement and progress. The coaches have been able to model lessons for us in areas like cooperative learning structures, which led to greater student engagement, and we continue to use those on a regular basis. Throughout the year, the coaches have been very focused on what they could do to help us as teachers and to best support our students, and we are really grateful that we have the opportunity to work with them this year.
Hi, my name is Teresa Strong, and I teach third grade at Struble Elementary. And as I reflect back a little bit on the coaches this year, I'll admit, it takes a little bit, beginning of the year, it took a little bit to kind of get in the groove how we were going to work together with the coaches, but once we kind of established a pattern, it just became an invaluable resource. I've used the coaches within my classroom with small groups and working individually with the kids, and while they were in the room, they kind of got to know my students. I've also met with the coaches on my plan time, and they've kind of helped me to see how I can remediate a standard, enrich a standard, and kind of zero in on exactly what the standard is asking for. I know that it's been fun to have them kind of introduce me to new technology. The kids have been excited about technology, they've been open to this year, they just came in with a wealth of ideas. Today, I met with Nicole, and she kind of helped me to streamline a co-menting project I'd like to do with my kids in math, and she was just another person to bounce ideas off of, and she saw it a different way than I did, and I think it's really going to come together nicely. So I've enjoyed the learning that the kids have gotten, in addition to the learning that I've gotten this year from our coaches. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Betsy Porter, and I'm a fifth grade teacher here at Struble Elementary School. I'd like to talk with you a little bit today about how wonderful the coaches from Hamilton County have been this year with us and our students. They've assisted us in so many different ways, and it's been absolutely a blessing to have them. Working with the coaches has been an excellent and enriching experience for Ms. Marshall, my teaching partner, and myself. The coaches have worked with small groups to remediate and close a team gap for our students. They've helped us develop pre-tests and post-tests. They've worked with us to develop behavioral plans for our students, as well as behavioral charts, and assisted with brainstorming ideas to help shape the students meeting their in a positive way. Finally, they've been extremely positive and encouraging, letting us know that we're headed in the right direction. They've provided invaluable support, both academically and professionally, and we couldn't have not had them this year.
And we appreciate our teachers cutting us this video, so big props to them.
So looking ahead to next school year as we wind down, but are always thinking about what's next, of course, we want to continue with our coaching model. We feel that's been, like the teacher said, invaluable, and everyone has worked together to really just continue to create pathways for achievement for our students. With our PBIS work, that will continue. Our team has committed to sticking together, and we will continue our work around tiered responses, especially with regard to corrective consequences, and we also plan as a building to apply for the Ohio PBIS recognition.
Another focus for the next school year is just going to be writing. Probably one of the difficult things we teach our kids to do, and we notice it's a struggle right now. So what we're going to try to do is create some vertical alignment between our grade levels, so that we're all speaking the same language, and when the kids go on to the next grade level, it's not like starting over, even though we're trying to get the same results, just so we can kind of get some, get some common language in there that they're, when they walk into the next grade level, they know exactly what's talking about and just keep on going.
And we have exciting work ahead with our intervention specialists and gen ed teachers to create increased opportunities for inclusion for our students with disabilities. And again, just excited about that work that we have ahead of us.
Will you say that? Thanks for coming in presenting, first of all. What would you say is one of the biggest struggles that you've encountered this year coming off of COVID?
It's a million dollar question. I think...
You can go, I'll remember.
All right. So I think when the kids, for some that haven't been in the building in a year, coming back in, expecting school behavior, I think has been a struggle. And then for some of our staff, it's, students are lower or behind where they typically are in some areas. And I think that is something that we're faced with, and still face with. I would say those two kinds of things together have made it more difficult.
Sure.
And then I think we tried to, I think we thought this was going to be more normal, and then as the year got going, it wasn't more normal, and almost in some way it became more difficult. But I think we're getting back to more normal, which is good.
I would agree. Closing the achievement gap, because that's what all teachers want to do each day and strive to do each day. I think going into it, we felt there would be, whatever normal is, right, that we might get back to that day-to-day operation that we were accustomed to prior to the pandemic, and we quickly found that wasn't the case. There were still protocols and procedures that needed to be put in place for staff and student safety. So I think that was one thing that we, we knew we were going to battle last year, but just weren't quite prepared to do it again. But as he said to start, our students and staff have been absolutely resilient and very willing to work with us to do what we needed to do to keep kids in the building and people safe.
Our staff has been awesome. I mean, they really have. Anything we've asked, they stepped up.
So what is the secret sauce with that, with your staff? Like, you know, we had a gathering last Thursday with all the building leaders, that you guys were there, and somebody made a comment, actually it might have been Colin, that you guys take that stuff home with you, like you take particular kids home with you that, you know, you either have been dealing with, whatever. And I think a lot of the things that we're dealing with is probably things we could have forecasted a little bit, and I'm not saying we should have, is you can prepare all you want, you're just going to have to get into the fight with it, right? And so if we have this much more issues or struggles, that's just that much more you're taking home with you. So, you know, to your staff, it sounds very cohesive. As a board, well, I don't hear much stuff coming from your building that somebody would call and say, hey, I'm having an issue with this, which is a litmus too. I think you guys have a lot of things that are really gelling well together with your staff, and so congratulations to you guys for being the leaders. You obviously set the example for them.
Thank you. I love your term "secret sauce." I don't think we have a secret sauce. But I would say honestly, and I don't want to speak for you, but I think you would agree, it all comes down to relationships and trust.
That's exactly it.
I mean, I feel we are people, people, and have worked hard from the start. When we knew that we were going to be leading a building together, that we were going to present a united front, and people could come to us and trust us, and I think obviously the staff survey, which I started to read incorrectly, sorry.
Well, you're trying to bring it the other way.
Shows that, so I don't know, anything you think?
No, I think you said it best. I mean, I think whenever we were working with people, we're people business, and in relationships, relationships are everything, and it goes back to like when we're all built with trust. I mean, when you trust people, big things get done. And I think we trust our staff. I mean, that's, they're good people and are working hard for our kids, and that's the end result. I mean, we're here, we're here for the kids, as much as it's fun to be with each other, it's the kids succeed.
And if there was a, I know that you said there were two therapists in your building?
Through Best Point, yeah.
Through Best Point.
And we have three counselors.
Three counselors. So if there was a position that you feel we needed more of, or would have been a much more urgent position to have, what would you say that would be, coming out of this year or through this year?
Coming out of COVID, I think the mental health of students and staff, but I feel we're very fortunate to have the three counselors that we do. So I don't know that I could put my finger on one additional person. I mean, never have too much support when it comes to something like that.
Yeah, I think that, so are you guys thinking like next year or just coming into this year?
Either one.
Yeah, I mean, I think definitely the mental health piece was something, you weren't, I'm not sure, we weren't sure what support was needed. And I think now we've got a pretty good handle, and our kids have worked hard, and they've accepted we've started the PBIS program. I think, I'm not really sure we need, like, I mean, obviously more hands is great because it helps the kids, but I'm not sure there's something that would really just be a big piece. I think it's having good people in place. About the three counselors and the two, we've got two deans of students who are not just there on the reactive side of things, it's being proactive. Cut it off, and get ahead of things, build those relationships, because there's not the consequence piece. And we've got, we'll meet one here in a minute, but between the two of them, and it's coming through Skype. And it's not just those seven, it's all, it's everybody taking an active role for our kids.
Yeah, I think that was a positive change from the opening year of the school, where we did not have a dean, and we had one counselor. And that's a pretty big place with a lot of needs, so we were just excited to know that we would have more support for our students and staff in that manner.
We call it Struble 4.0.
That's awesome. I liked your, about the second grade, because, you know, I think once we get a little bit further through this, we're going to have quite a bit of data on which age range is going to be impacted the most.
I have to update it back that up, that's my...
Sure. You guys are subject matter experts. I mean, you're seeing it every day, so that's interesting.
They're working hard, though.
They are, they're a little hard.
Well, first of all, a round of applause for your achievements. That was outstanding.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We know where you work.
So next, you would like to...
So thank you to Trey and Karen, and we would like to introduce Patrick Clark. Or Trey, are you going to?
All right, so we've got a special presentation. Kind of like Karen and I said, PBIS was a huge focus for us this year. We want to introduce Patrick Clark, and I want to give credit to Karen, because I know she kind of took a lead on this with our building. But yeah, between them and our PBIS team, we've got a lot of great things happening, and just wanted to share some of those things with you.
Yeah, so thank you, Trey, for the introduction. Yeah, my name is Patrick Clark, I am one of the deans of students at Struble. Thank you for having us. I know that my students here are really excited to share some of their experiences with you. As Karen mentioned earlier, PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, and we have implemented a program this year called PBIS Rewards. This program helps to build common language throughout our building, it helps build community, it helps build ownership and accountability for the students, because they're not just students in our building, they're part of our building and family. And so I brought three awesome students with me tonight. They're going to tell you about our program and how it works, and some of their personal experiences. So I'm going to have you up here just a little bit so that they can hear you.
Hi, my name is Ruby, and I am a first grade student at Struble. This year, my teacher is Miss Kennedy. I want to tell you about the Blue Jay Way. The Blue Jay Way is the teachers of each other and our school. We earn points when teachers notice we are following the Blue Jay Way. Each day on that announcement, we hear the Blue Jay Way and the Blue Jay Way, and it helps us remember how to be a good student. This year, as a reward, I earned lunch with Mr. Clark. While we ate lunch, we picked out items for the PBIS store that students could buy with their points. Earning points is a special thing that I really enjoy.
Hi, my name is Aria Dents, and I'm a third grade student. This year, my teacher, Mrs. Kennedy, this is my third year at Struble Elementary. We'll be told that each morning, we play the Blue Jay Way. This year, I have finally won a senior scholarship in this grade. Same pledge is a popular reward because we gave different spirit voices that we did. We also host the Blue Jay Way at the elementary school. During the year, Mrs. Kennedy has awarded lots of points. Some of those we have earned places by using the doors in the school, following directions and gaining a better point. We don't give class game or battles, or even a tournament. On the shop, we get to check out clothes, and by greeting, it's both there. On the shop is where we get the check out codes and by doing things, it's worth it. And I'm like, I'm going to miss this, Mrs. Kennedy's still. Maybe I'll have points for the new thing.
My name is Nolly Evans. I'm a fifth grader at Struble, and my teacher is Miss Andrew Cooper. Ari said she earned saying the pledge with Miss Bason. One of the rewards I earned this year was moved with Mr. Richmond. This means I got 40 minutes to play basketball with Mr. Richmond. With two other kids who also bought the reward, we played three-on-one and beat Mr. Richmond. I also earned some other rewards, candy and small stuffed animal. One way our goal earned, one way our class earned points this year is by meeting all class goals. For example, we have improved on our goal of interruptions in the classroom and receive points when we meet or beat our goal. At one point, we had 180 interruptions a day. Now we are down to under 25. That's just been a huge accomplishment for us. Another time I earned points because a teacher noticed that I was cleaning up big wet towels in the bathroom. Taking care of our school is part of the Blue Jay Way. At the end of the day, just like the morning, Mr. Richmond says follow the Blue Jay Way. Taking care of ourselves, each other and our school. Thanks, thank you for your time and listening us to us talk about PBIS rewards.
So there's, there's not much that I can add to their voice because I think they speak, you know, highly of both themselves and of all of their classmates and all of the hard work that they've been doing following the Blue Jay Way. I do want to give a quick shout out to board member Nicole for, she, our business partner, Emeritas. Come every month, she brings volunteers. They help us provide some of the rewards for the kids. It's great to have them in our building and so thank you personally for that. I know we fill about a thousand paper bags full of little stuff for kids every month. And that's a lot of work and I do really appreciate that. So, thank you very much. I'm also happy to answer any questions you guys have about our rewards program.
Well, I just want to say thank you. I mean, coming in there every month, there's, I don't know how you're doing anything but playing basketball and eating lunch with students. You guys are very popular and it says a lot to the relationships that you guys have built with the students. So thank you for that. And as a parent of a first grader, Ruby, that was outstanding. Aria and Nolly, you guys all did wonderful speaking. I have a first grader and that, that was amazing to hear you speak like that. So very well, well done. My son loves to come home and check the app and see what points that he got. It means a lot to the students. So just know that you guys are making a difference and I appreciate it as a parent, so thank you.
So it looks like we have some proud parents in the crowd. What do you see when the kids come home as this year have progressed with this program? Have you seen anything? I mean, clearly we're teaching kids how to respect and love one another and develop relationships. That, that doesn't just stop when they get on the bus or make it home. That, I'm sure that carries over once they get home.
She, Ruby was at Struble every day here. And, oh my gosh, every night, it was just a battle. And I have a comment that's just that she's excited, she wants to show me like she's learning, she's excited about her work. She wants to do all the people's work on the day. She loves it. So I just guess that I will be, you know.
Any other parents? Are there any other parents here? Would you like to say anything? No? Okay. Awesome.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good job. Do you have any more? You're using your timer. That's good.
Oh, wait till they, should I wait until they give them a minute?
That was pretty awesome. That was really good. My alma mater. I'm not surprised. Is that where you went? Yeah, is that right?
A couple other students I just want to recognize. We have Leila Klotz from Corrine High School who earned an award of merit in the Ohio State PTA Reflections Contest for her piece entitled "The Ways a World Can Change." Landon Hill from Northwest High School earned an award of merit in the PTA Reflections Contest for his piece entitled "Save Our Sharks." Autumn Pruitt, a second grader at Pleasant Run Elementary, earned honorable mention in the Reflections Contest for her photograph titled "Saving the World." And Carson Asante, a second grader at Pleasant Run Elementary, also earned honorable mention for his photograph titled "Recycling Can Change." So congratulations to these students as well. Thank you.
Chris, are there any legislative updates?
Mark, a couple things. Talked to Amy briefly about it. It looks like we've been talking over the last few weeks about Hospital 126. That's where the school district can't challenge any commercial reappraisals. And while it went through the House, it went through the Senate, and the governor signed it. In 90 days, it becomes law. And as much as I'm very conservative about raising taxes, I don't like it when they take away a million and a half dollars a year. And that's what it's going to do. Our 1.6, Amy, is what you said it would be?
That is what the current year is, what we were able to maintain.
And with the cost.
Or would have lost.
With the current, with the real estate values going up, it just, that number, by just the virtue of the real estate property values going up, would be probably higher every year then. As long as real estate keeps going up, it just makes sense that we would lose more money.
Just depends on who files it.
Who files. Well, it, it is common in most states to not have these challenges. Believe there were only three states that did do it, but it's unfortunate that it's that much money. And it won't hit districts in the pocketbook the article I read for about 12 to 18 months because of the way taxes are done in the rears. So that's not good news. Second thing, just as an FYI, one of the state representatives in the tri-state introduced what we're hearing a lot about in Florida. It's basically, I don't want to get into all the details, but about the sexual stuff with kids. There's a name for it. I don't know if it's appropriate to bring that up now. But they're calling it here in Ohio, the parental rights and education law. And so it's just been introduced. It's going to have to work its way through, but you'll probably be hearing more about that. And that is it, Mark.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions for Chris? Okay, that brings us to 8.1.
Just one for the board members, the all-boards meetings, Macecs, and if you guys are going to go RSVP.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I don't know, that's all we have.
All right, that brings us to 6.1. Any reports from any employee organizations?
Good evening. I'm Dave Frye, the president of the Teachers Union. I just want to take just a couple, almost your time. A hot topic that has been discussed a lot, especially the last week or two, has been the elementary math adoption programs. The IM and the Intro Math programs. Personally, a fifth grade math teacher, I did not pilot the program, but I have a vested interest in, in the upcoming programs that, you know, we tend to choose or not choose. So basically, I received probably 40, 50 emails, text messages, phone calls from teachers and about a handful from parents regarding this meeting tonight. Wondering, you know, that they, people are fearful that you were guys are going to adopt the program tonight. So they basically reached out to me with some concerns that they had about the programs that I would just like to share a few of the highlights with you. IM, the illustrative math program, is the one that's giving a lot of bad publicity, so to speak.
What was the name of that?
Illustrative math.
Okay.
IM is what you'll hear called a lot. IM. So basically, what I'm hearing, and like I said, I, I've just looked at, I've looked at the materials. I met with Ms. Reilly this morning. We had a great conversation regarding the, the program. And she showed me a lot of things online and so forth. So I'm a little bit more in tune. And like I said, I've talked to some of the teachers that have been using it. And what I'm hearing is that it's great for some of the very high achieving, gifted type math students. They are showing some success. Beyond those, I'm hearing the students are really struggling. And they're feeling frustrated. They're going home to the parents and not, the parents can't help them because they're feeling frustrated. So parents are Googling, trying to find out, you know, ways to help their child. Because it's more student-led, it's not the old-fashioned, you know, teacher-directed, you know, drill and kill, so to speak. And I'm not saying that's not a good way to go. I'm just saying, I don't know if our students are ready for that or they're prepared for that yet. Not sure if the teachers are all prepared for that yet. Now, as I said, talking with Ms. Reilly this morning, we did talk about, okay, possible putting more, you know, professional development in programs where we can teach, just, teach the teachers how to use the program even better. Like I said, that's, things are possible and planned. So we just, you know, discussed some of those. But most, like I said, most of the comments that I'm hearing from the 40, all the ones I heard from 40 people that reached or so reached out to me were all negative comments. I reached out and I found some positives. And those were from some of the teachers that are teaching the more gifted or accelerated math students. I'd say there aren't a few other out there. I didn't talk to everybody. So this is just a sample that I'm getting. I looked into the Intro, Into Math program, which has a lot more workbook activities. Seems to be a little bit more student-friendly, a little bit more activities involved, more teacher-directed. Not that there's not some student-led activities and so forth, but it's more teacher-led discussions and then it opens up to the students. That got a lot more praise than the IM program. So I'd said I would speak to concerns of the, the teachers. Like I said, majority are not in favor of the IM. I know this is just an informational meeting, but I thought it would be important that you hear what majority of the teachers. And I know there are a few teachers that are going to speak on behalf, maybe one way or the other. But this, these are the information that I've received. So.
Questions or anything?
I got a question from Brenda. Brenda, what, who did the piloting on this program? What teachers, are the teachers that are using the program? Did they do the piloting of it?
Yes, so Lori Reilly, our elementary assistant director, led the process for reviewing the two options that we had for math.
Right.
There were 44 teachers, I believe, involved in the process and Lori is going to be sharing.
From our district?
From our district.
Okay.
Which is a, a large pilot compared to other programs we've looked at. And she will be describing the process as well as some of the feedback.
Yeah, when we get to the, when we get to the item of information, Lori is going to share an overview of the process and a little bit more in-depth. Because we know a couple of you have reached out with some concerns that you've heard from people who've reached out to you. So we wanted to make sure Lori had a chance to kind of share all that.
Okay. Great. Thank you, David.
Thanks. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anyone else?
Good evening, boards, superintendents, administrators, and staff and community members. My name is Margot Manger, and I am a third grade teacher at Monfort Heights Elementary. I've taught in our district for 25 years. I've taught at Houston Elementary, Pleasant Run, and Monfort Heights currently. I'm a proud member of the community and a graduate of Corrine High School, along with my husband and two children. Over the years, I've been involved in piloting programs, gaining PD hours for new initiatives, building leadership teams, PTAs, boosters, several interviewing panels, both as an employee and a community member. I'm here tonight on behalf of some of the teachers that have some extreme concerns about programs that have been, are going to be considered for the math program for 2022, 2023 school year for grades two through five. The information I'm sharing with you comes from six teachers at Monfort Heights Elementary. And I'm not naming names, I just want to just give you an idea of what they've told me. The two programs, the illustrative math, is not enough resources for intervention. These are just specifics from them. No homework for resources. Teacher addition is hard to follow. Teacher slides presented are black and white, so in the print itself, not kid-friendly. Online resources are not kid-friendly or appealing. Some of the hands-on activities take a long time to prepare and would be hard for students to make themselves. It takes a long time to work through lessons. You would need a 90-minute math block or longer, which we do not currently have. The program is a higher level and lower kids really struggle with it. Teachers would need a supplement that is, excuse me, what is missing? One module taught by a third grade by two teachers support. The coach, was very supportive with our coaches and our specialists. And they were told not to supplement any resources, even though they felt it was needed. That topic that they did for that, in that third grade classroom, was a topic that lasted for three weeks. Small group instruction is hard to implement due to the depth of the program that's set up as a whole group program. It's kind of a bland learning environment where we don't feel that that's what we currently are doing. And if, if you needed additional support in the classroom, which we've been told we will have support, it would be hard to have enough materials or resources due to the, the program itself lacking in some of those areas. The Into Math, like Dave has already said, it was trying to pull some things that were given. And our building, and I'm not saying this is all the buildings, but in our building, our second grade team was told they didn't get enough materials and they didn't have to pilot. They had to do the survey after looking at the TE, which is the teacher's manual, for 20 minutes and give feedback. No, no extra support, support was given from coaches or specialists during that time during the Into Math. They told them to just try some of the topic. They only use in third grade the program for one week compared to the three with the other. This program itself was more kid-friendly appearance. Kids could be, or were more interested in it. Assessments were used with a guide and a pre and post assessment that were actually already there. The middle school uses the proposed IM program for math. Board, I do have a question for you because I don't know the answers. Can you find out if there's any data that shows success with that program? How long has the program been in use? And are there teachers that are using the program that could give you feedback from actually using the program for, for some time? This could just be a speculation on my part. But the math teachers in our building felt the decision of using IM program was going to be a direction for the upcoming school year before the pilot even started. Our math specialist and math coach both showed a lot of interest in the support of the program. And currently at, at my school, at Monfort Heights, we have a meeting scheduled to meet with our Hamilton County coach for math to discuss how our math block will look next year using IM. My meeting actually is scheduled for this Friday. In the end, the students in our district at this time are coming out of a pandemic and they need time to be taught and help to close the gaps. The IM program that you are being presented for the elementary grades two through five math curriculum needs to be revisited at another time. As we as teachers need to prepare the coming months with the new implementation of curriculum, coaches and specialists have shared with us for our language arts block. I myself am a self-contained classroom teacher, which means I teach language arts and math. So that means I would have a new LA block, the way it's looking to be promoting an I do, we do, you do style of teaching, which is what I've used in my classroom. I feel the IM is a very teacher-led with little time for allow our level of learners to gain success. Those students that are identified gifted have several teachers educating themselves with the help from the county, gaining HQPD hours to teach our students that are identified as gifted in the elementary level. We do not currently have a self-gifted class like we do for language arts. We have it for, we have it for language arts, not for math. I am currently one of those teachers gaining some hours, so I do have 50-plus hours in that area. I appreciate the time that you've given me this evening. I just asked that before you vote, that you look into the actual teacher feedback that was given from the professionals that were asked. And they work in the trenches every day with our students in our community. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Jenny Mallencamp, and I currently teach fourth grade at Monfort Heights Elementary. I've been in the building for about four years and in the district, about four extra years, so eight years total in the district. I piloted, so I do teach math. Like I said, I only teach math and science this year, so I am not self-contained, which I hope to continue, which I know that's another conversation as well. I'm ranting right off my topic. So I did pilot both programs. I started with the illustrative math. And currently I have 38 students total between two classes. 12 of those students are on IEPs of some sort. Some are in the very bottom, we're talking first percentile. very bottom. We're talking first percentile, second percentile, and then others, um, are a little bit higher, but, um, may only have a speech IEP. So I do not have the gifted cluster. I have zero gifted math kids this year. Um, and so this is real world. And so how, um, Trey was talking about, you know, that those second graders, I'm seeing it even in fourth grade, right? Because they missed their, end of their second grade. We had, uh, I think five of my students were remote all last year, many of which did not participate. So I feel like I have a true representation of our district this year. Um, and so when I did IM, I honestly lost my kids that had been doing really well all school year. Um, one of the reasons I feel like I lost them was because illustrative has a lot of writing. And I know that overall, one of our, you know, focuses is writing and literacy, and I understand that and I hear you. But I also have these students that are math-minded like myself, and I, I lost them because there was so much writing. They were missing the content. Um, and I am a numbers person, and so I wanted to talk about some numbers. So middle school, um, like Margot has said, has been using illustrative math, and I'm not sure how many years they've been using it, but last year, our data that is now posted, anybody can look this up, um, Corrine Middle School, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students had twenty-seven percent pass, thirty-six percent pass, and twenty-two percent pass in math. I don't think those are great numbers. Um, White Oak had forty-two percent pass, thirty-six percent pass, and forty-six percent pass. And again, this is sixth, seventh, eighth grade numbers. Pleasant Run was twenty-seven percent, twenty-seven percent, and thirty-one percent. So we have middle schools that have been using this program, and I understand that we were in COVID years. I hear you. I hear all of that. But those are not numbers that I want to go run and buy a program based on. Our elementary numbers, again, I'm at Monfort Heights. I teach fourth grade. Every year that I have taught fourth grade, I have shown the top amount of growth, if not the very top, then the one right below that, meaning that my students are showing more than a year's growth. Nobody's come and asked me, well, what are you doing, Jenny? I provide curriculum for my entire grade level at Monfort Heights, and I did that when I worked at Corrine as well. Um, I helped provide the curriculum. And when I was at Corrine, we had numbers, again, eighty percent or higher. Mr. Climbers here, um, he can maybe support that data as well. Um, this year at Monfort Heights, eighth grade, we had eighty percent, oh, sorry, last year, we had eighty percent pass with COVID. Eighty percent of our students passed that test. Not because we had a program, because we didn't. We haven't had a true program in years. But what we did is not have three meetings during our plan bells. What we did was work together as a team. What we did was collaborate and share materials, and eighty percent of our students passed. And that's been, you can go back and look at the data, consistently, every school that I've been at in fourth grade, we've been in that eighty percent or higher. And if not eighty, then probably a high seventy. I don't have all of those numbers in front of me. Um, at Monfort Heights as well, third grade, sixty-third, sixty-three percent passed, um, and fifty-three percent of our fifth graders passed. At Struble, um, their numbers were forty percent, fifty-two, and forty-two, and again, that's third, fourth, and fifth grade. Um, Taylor Elementary was thirty-nine percent, forty-eight percent, and thirty-one percent. Um, Corrine was forty-eight percent. Fourth grade, again, was seventy percent there, forty percent for fifth grade. Um, and while so, some of these numbers aren't as high, they're still, as an average, better than the middle school, which now we want to copy this program. Um, eighth grade, so if you think about eighth grade, they've been using IM at least a couple of years. That's, again, I, you can't quote me on that, um, but my assumption is that they've been using this illustrative as an average.
I got a question. Brenda, how long has the middle schools been using this program?
Um, we studied the program for a full year, and this is the second full year.
Okay. Sorry.
No, I, I, it's, I mean, it's good information.
Yeah.
Because I don't know, you know? Um, so as a total eighth grade, as, in our district, only twenty-six percent of them passed the state math test. And again, this is from, you know, last year's data. So number, you know, reason number one was, well, we're gonna use it because some middle schools using it, and this is gonna help set them up. And I don't feel, um, right now, off of this data, that that's a good reason to implement IM. Um, number two, they said in the, in the email that came out to us, well, we want to do something different than what we're doing. Well, what are we doing? Because again, we haven't had a true curriculum in several years. And again, nobody's come and said, well, Jenny, what are you doing? What were you doing at Corrine that worked? What are you doing at Monfort Heights that worked? Uh, but yet consistently, the schools that I have been at, the grades that I have been at, we have done well. Um, there's not been, again, like I said, a program in place. I'm not sure what they're comparing it to. Um, last year, again, we had a teacher who wasn't even certified in math, but under COVID laws, she didn't have to be certified in math. And again, we had eighty percent pass. We had another teacher that had not taught since the, uh, new standards came out in two thousand seventeen, had not taught math since then, had only been teaching LA. Still, we had eighty percent pass. Um, again, last year, we didn't have letters training. Letters training has been a big thing. It's taken up a lot of people's time that we have to do on our own. We have to do during our planning. We have, again, three meetings, um, that we have to do every week that takes up a lot of our plan time. So again, people aren't able to collaborate like we have. Um, I had a meeting scheduled with Lori to sit down and go over all of the, you know, I wanted to show her, like, I, all my scores that I'm telling you are not to brag and make me sound good, but it's to say that I love this into math, and it is more rigorous than what I've been doing. And if what I've been doing is getting us these results, and I'm saying that this is even more rigorous, but yet at a level that our students, even the population that I have, are achieving with it, I feel like that just shows a lot. And I, and none of that was, in my opinion, was not taken into consideration. That meeting was canceled and not rescheduled, and I knew it wouldn't be because I had already been told a decision had been made. Um, another thing was that, uh, in the email that was sent out was that both, both programs received high ranking, and I don't really believe that that is true. Um, you guys know how it is. We all talk, we, we, that's what people do, right? We talk, we share. Um, and every person I talked to, uh, like I said, Dave said, thirty to forty teachers complained about this program and had negative things. So I find it hard to believe that both programs truly had high rankings. Um, I will say that I believe IM is rigorous. I'm not downing that. Uh, but is it teaching in a way that we're ready for? Not at all. It does take a, a very long time to do. Uh, the other thing is the, the extra practice, the homework, the differentiation. Illustrative math doesn't have any of that. And the comment in the email was, well, they're gonna get it. They're gonna get it for us. And so again, I ask you, do we want to pick a program that we haven't even seen what homework they're gonna provide or what practice they're going to provide? Um, and you're gonna hear people, I'm sure, stand up and say, we don't need homework, and I'm here to disagree with you. Um, how did you learn to tie your shoes? You practiced, right? How you learned to ride a bike? You practiced, right? All of these things, everything, you have to practice. My own children go to Monfort Heights as well. Um, my oldest child is in second grade. She is diagnosed with apraxia and, um, all kinds of other things that cause processing. She needs that practice. My students that I teach need that practice. I don't count it for a grade. They don't lose recess if they don't have it. There's no punishment for not doing it, but it's very evident that the ones that are doing homework are achieving better. And then we have those conversations. Put a star next to one that you didn't understand. Make sure that when we go over it, you're remembering. I teach math at ten o'clock in the morning. They don't go home until after four o'clock or that late school. So six hours later, you know, or they, maybe they don't even do homework until seven or eight, um, they're gonna forget. And this is an opportunity for them to just try it again on their own, reflect on their learning. Did they learn it? Did they not learn it? So I am a strong believer in homework, um, but again, like I said, I don't take it for a grade and I don't, I don't punish them if they don't have it. Um, there are lots of things, like I said, that IM doesn't have any of that. And yes, they're, they're saying that they're gonna get it, and I just have a hard time believing that. So what's gonna happen is we're gonna have to spend our summer. We're gonna have to spend our weekends. We're gonna have to spend our evenings finding supplemental materials. There's just no way around it. That, that is what will have to happen if this program is truly purchased and bought and, and made to implement next year. Um, every good teacher's going to add things to it. So yes, I'll be honest, into math doesn't have as many, uh, group things maybe as what illustrative had. Um, but any good teacher's gonna incorporate those in, right? We all do games. We all do activities. Um, we all do those hands-on things. Uh, uh, I say again, if you're a good teacher. And if not, then what are we doing? How are we helping those teachers that aren't succeeding? What plan is in place? If there's a teacher consistently not showing growth, then what's our plan? I don't think that illustrative math is a plan. Again, in my, this is, this is my opinion. Um, yes, I, I could go on. There's the order of events, um, the way that it's taught and set up doesn't match anything that makes sense in my mind. Again, I feel like I'm a math person. We use IXL, which again, somebody else had mentioned tonight. Even IXL isn't in order that makes sense, completely opposite of what this program is. Um, we talk about relationships. This is not helping relationships. You have forty-plus teachers that have submitted, uh, concern for this. And so again, moving forward, how is that building our relationships? Um, like I said, the writing is overwhelming. I lost kids who typically are strong in math, but I lost them because there was so much writing, um, that was involved in it. Uh, like again, Margot said, the, the timing of it was not ideal. It was right before our state testing, which is tomorrow. And so I lost a lot of time trying to really fully do illustrative math. The, the timing of it, um, is a lot longer. That's a concern that we won't even get through everything before the state testing. Um, and then some people just said, I'm not gonna do into math. I'm not even gonna look at it because I didn't like illustrative, and I have a state test to get ready for. I can't take more time. And I'm not gonna say that was on purpose, but I think that it's not a fair assessment, that there are many teachers that did not even do into math because they didn't like illustrative and lost a lot of time that we didn't, you know, they, we had, we didn't have more time to lose. Um, and I was also told from specialist, uh, math specialist, that they were told to promote IM and only to promote IM to their teachers. And again, there's a lot of people that are scared. They don't want to come here. Um, and, and even I am, you know, I am a member now of the Portrait of a Graduate program. I want to do good things. I have an administrative degree that perhaps one day I will use in the district, right? And so it is scary to come up here and go against people that are my boss's boss, right, making these decisions. But I have to do what I think is best for children, and I don't think that IM is it, not for where we are. If this was only for gifted kids, yes, we're not there. We're not ready, um, and we're gonna lose a lot of kids. These test scores are not gonna go up, in my opinion. So, thank you for listening.
Jenny, I've got a question for you.
Yeah, sure.
Um, you had mentioned, or you'd be one of the other speakers, that, and I find this hard to believe in this modern age of digital stuff, that the samples are in black and white?
When I did illustrative math, I don't, I, the slides were not necessarily in black and white, but they were, um, like a light blue-ish background, and then it would just have the problem on it.
Just dull.
So it was not kid-friendly. The books are black and white, um, the workbook. So each, each program had a workbook for the students. Um, illustrative, yes, was completely black and white. It had, you know, three to five problems. Into math was colorful, right? So even that right there, um, while, yes, it sounds silly that we're gonna pick something because of colors, right? That's why I don't bring it up, because I don't want to say that I'm picking it because of its colors. I also have to engage my kids, right? And what do they want to look at? Black and white or something more engaging and in color?
Do you know how much money companies spend in marketing for like cereal box colors? Just so it is attractive to people and people want to buy it? That, that's incredible to me.
Right. I mean, I would agree that I think that in itself, um, is huge. And so when I opened the workbook and my kids were like, ugh, again? And then when I did it with, and I did full, and I liked into math so much that I did it beyond the pilot. I kept going, um, even with my next lessons, still using it. I didn't have to, but I really liked it and felt, you know, every homework assignment has three test prep questions, meaning this is exactly how it's gonna look on the state test. Um, again, the, the actual tests for the unit are set up, how the state tests are going to be. The IM, uh, test had, I think one of them had six questions, and that was the test. And I just, I, again, like a lot of it was writing and explain this and explain that. And even on our state test, students aren't doing all that writing. They're, they're, uh, sorting things or they're doing the calculation and putting in the number. It's not all of that writing. And so again, I get, we do, we do writing and we do which one doesn't belong. And we have all these other things in place that we are writing in math. Don't, believe me, we are. Uh, but this was just, we, again, we lost a lot of kids and a lot of time because we were just writing in this workbook that was black and white and not engaging. Good question. Thank you. Anybody else?
I just.
Here all night.
I, I just wanted to thank you for having the courage to come to speak this evening about this.
Thank you.
It's, it's, uh, to be clear, it's an information item on the agenda for this evening.
Yes, yes.
To be brought back at, I'm guessing, our next meeting, May ninth, for, uh, action at that meeting. So it's, you know, exactly for that, for information to gather. And part of that information process is you and Margot coming and speaking and, uh, and Dave and letting us know. And I think it's, you know, uh, very important, more so to hear from you speaking tonight, you know, as, you know, Dave can say, like, you know, I've heard from forty, I've heard from fifty, I've heard from sixty, but that's just numbers. But to hear you speak from your own experiences, uh, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. I have received numerous things
Yes.
From several schools, and thank you guys for coming to speak.
Well, and I will say this too, is, um, even the, the specialists at my building, again, this, I'm gonna say this is hearsay, right? Um, but I'm told that my special, well, actually, I know my specialist at my building told me that our second grade really liked illustrative math. And I've reached out to our second grade teachers that did the pilot, did not persuade them to not put my two signs, just asked, hey, did you guys, how did you feel about illustrative? Okay, we don't work together. They don't really know my feelings or anything. I just said, how did you feel about it? And they were like, it was terrible. We hated it. We didn't even finish. We didn't, I said, well, what about into math? Well, we didn't have the materials. We weren't given the stuff to do it, but we had to fill the survey out. So I feel like even there, there's miscommunication that our specialists were told to promote the IM. They were told to promote illustrative and get everybody on board. And I, and when you really ask the people that did it, I don't think that that is true. So again, it, does it have rigor? Absolutely. Right? I'm not, I'm not discounting that. Um, is there an online piece? Yes. Is it friendly? No. Uh, is there homework? No. Is there additional practice? No. Is there fluency? No. Are all of those things important? Yes, very much so. Um, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you guys for coming to speaking. All right. Uh, that should be community comments, and we've not received any this evening. That brings us to Superintendent Consent Items.
So tonight we have, um, some normal items. There's a couple of other items I want to go over on there as well. We have our personnel items with three retirees, fifteen resignations, um, two job abandonment, and three initial appointments, as well as various supplementals, extra duty contract days for our counselors and, at the secondary level, and a job description for a music liaison position, which would be a liaison between, um, the music departments and the curriculum office to make sure that all of the needs of the music department are met. And we have under business vendor contracts, which we have, uh, multiple licenses for curriculum materials, as well as a revised, um, MOU for invasions, which is our summer elementary, um, learning, uh, summer school program. Um, donations, we have the Chevy Charitable Foundation to Corrine High School for Scholarships. Maria Sparks donating a piano to P R E. The Joe Bertram Foundation donating furniture to Northwest High School, and Side by Side donating, um, monetary donations to Corrine High School and Corrine Elementary. There is a resolution on there for the purchase of five buses, um, for our normal replacement cycle for buses. Um, that does, um, the memo on there does explain that part of that is offset through a grant we received through O D E. That allowed us to use some of that additional money from the bus purchases for, um, replacements of cameras and, and the necessary equipment on buses. So it, um, was a, a helpful thing to continue to get the five buses and, um, some additional support we needed. And then there is a resolution to accept, um, participation in the ALP program, which is the expedited program with OFCC, which allows us to continue to earn credits like we did in phase one with the elementaries with phase two of our master facility plan.
How many credits do we have right now for that, Daryl?
Seventeen, about seventeen million.
Okay.
So with that, the superintendent recommends approval of the consent items as listed.
That passes five to zero. Brings us to Amy Wells.
Good evening. First, we have our, uh, minutes from March twenty-eighth to dispense with reading of and approve. We have our March, uh, financial report. Our all-funds balance was seventy-seven point five million. Our general fund unreserved balance is forty-four point six million. Our fiscal year-to-date revenues are at eighty-six million or about eighty-eight percent of what we're projecting on. or about eighty-eight percent of what we're projecting on our forecast. And our expenditures are at sixty-seven million or sixty-nine percent. Or seventy-five percent through year. Our investment weighted average return is point four eight percent. And our list of monthly bills for the month of March were our routine monthly bills, as well as we had some student and staff software. We had our B W C annual self-insurance premium. We purchased some sporting equipment and supplies. And we also have our auxiliary and grant plan payments that schools choose to purchase. Next, we have to accept and approve and appropriate funds. So first we have to accept our bus purchase grant of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, prove it to be, to create the fund and to appropriate the spend. Then our Corrin High School is splitting our show cards and our course. So they need a separate fund so that they can do some fundraising for course now that it will be separated, so we need to create a fund for that. And then we have scholarships. We have scholarships that where we can only spend the interest. And then we have other scholarships that we receive each year and they're flow-through. So we need to create two new funds, one for each high school so that we can put the flow-through scholarships in for proper tracking. And then finally, we have a resolution to accept the amounts and rates that are established by the county auditor and certified by the Hamilton County Budget Commission. And the one thing that is different this year is the Mofford Heights bonds roll off for next year. And so those will no longer be on the tax dividend. So with that, I ask the board to approve the items as listed.
So moved. Oh, I have one question. Who gets to drive the new buses? Is that rock, paper, scissors?
But you work if you're what we saw up in your truck.
Good point.
So it happens on pick day. They all get to pick their routes and the buses go with the routes.
Gotcha.
Amy, what does a new bus cost? We bought just one bus.
Depends on if it's a standard bus or...
It's a standard bus.
It's a standard bus, about ninety-eight thousand.
Because when I started, you're many moons ago, I think it was sixty-five thousand. Of course, price of cars is quadruple in those years too.
They had square wheels back then.
Fred Flintstone.
Amy, they passed five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have two things on there for information. I'll do them in reverse order. One is textbook adoption for the Advanced Women in American History course. The other one is elementary math textbook adoption. And I do want to thank everyone who came tonight to speak on behalf of your belief of what's best for the kids in the district. We never want to not hear from you, so we appreciate that you were here and that you spoke and that you shared your ideas and thoughts. So know that that is always welcomed and valued. We do want to take and give Lori time to go through a more detailed analysis of how we got to where we are and why they're recommending this as the right program for the district. So I'm going to turn it over to Lori and let her go through some information for all of you.
Thank you, Daryl. Thank you, everyone, for giving me some time tonight. As you know, this is on the board agenda for information. So I thought that it would be appropriate that I actually give you the information regarding the textbook adoption. So Jenny, thank you for doing my first few slides. Here's our recent OST data, all the way back to 2017, 2018. You can see that our scores typically averaged around fifty percent. We had a little bit of success in fourth grade and seventeen, eighteen and eighteen, nineteen, but they're far from where they need to be. Our map trend data, this is the amount of students above the forty-first percentile. So you can see all of these hover close to about fifty percent. We have some small pockets that get close to sixty percent. A big frustration, I believe, our teachers have is that they just don't feel successful at their job. It's hard to come in each and every day, put these lessons together. And I absolutely agree with Jenny. We've not had a very strong math program. And Jenny does a wonderful job of collecting resources and really putting some best practices out there. But we have other teachers that are struggling and are spending hours finding math things to put together. And when you spend that much time kind of creating your lessons and designing your plans to get these results, it's very disheartening. It doesn't make you super excited to come to work. So we have to change what we're doing. If we continue to do the same type of teaching in math and allow our teachers to have to, or expect our teachers to supplement and pull things here and there, they're going to continue to be exhausted and we're going to continue to get the exact same results that we're getting. So we're trying to shift the way we teach math in this district. So again, Jenny was right. We've not had a strong math program in the last few years. We were supposed to adopt, Brenda was three years ago. And at that time, we could not determine a program. So that was three years ago.
You mean you couldn't find a program that you want like?
We could not settle on a program that we thought was best. The ones that kept coming out, I believe, as clear winners, and I wasn't super involved in that process, were ones that continued to kind of teach the old-school math way. And we were really looking to start that shift to teaching math differently. So for reference, it's been about nine years since we've had a true math adoption.
Why, why has it been nine years? Why, why?
So our cycle is six years. Every six years, we do an adoption. And then with not having consensus on another math adoption, adoptions are expensive. We have to be really considerate of the community and taxpayer money. We don't want to spend seven hundred thousand dollars on a program that's not going to get us different results. So at that time, the curriculum department chose not to do an adoption. We're not up for a math adoption this year, but we need math, a math program. We need to support our teachers in teaching math. So we were able to maneuver some funds kind of mid-year to do a math adoption for next year.
Is there any other school districts doing this math adoption that we know of?
The illustrative math?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Who are they?
Are there any other local districts?
Yeah.
And they're happy with it? And they're, they're satisfied?
I think it's challenging programs that require some major shift. Change process.
So allow me to just kind of tell you a little bit about it. So this was the process that we followed for the math adoption. We first set, set to determining needs. When I say we, I worked with all of our math specialists from the buildings and all of our Hamilton County math coaches to assess really what are the needs in our building? What are we seeing? What's the type of teaching? How engaged are our students in math? Are they really developing an understanding of math and what these things mean? Or is it just they're memorizing an algorithm that they can apply? But anything other than that, they're struggling in math. We did some research, we reviewed, we selected, we did a pilot, and then we reviewed again. So I want to walk you through all of these. The first thing was determining needs. So did a little bit of research, spent some time really focusing on what is best practice math instruction? What does it mean when we say we're going to try to shift our math instruction to a more conceptual model? And I found this, I have this two-minute video that I think might help put that into perspective for you.
What was math class like for you growing up? Well, if you're like most people, it probably looked something like this. They'd teach you a little lesson, demonstrating how shitty he wanted you to solve a problem. You practiced with some of your classmates with the support of your teacher. And then you were expected to demonstrate mastery on your own. This is known as the I do, we do, you do approach. Well, in recent years, there've been a lot of efforts to change this. For starters, we need to shift the teacher's role from being the deliverer of knowledge to the facilitator of learning. So we eliminate the idea of the standard deliver approach to teaching. Then we flip the order around and put the students front and center in the learning. With this approach, we start with the problem and allow each student to make sense of it for themselves. Then students work collaboratively to solve the problem using methods that make sense to them, all the while sharing and revising their thinking. Finally, we come in and synthesize learning based on what students have done. We facilitate conversations among students and support them in connecting their individual thinking to their peers. We can visualize this in three key steps. First, there's the launch, where students are introduced to the problem and work to make sense of it. Then there's the release, where students go off to work on the problem using strategies that make sense to them. During this time, the teacher moves throughout the classroom, making observations of each student's approach. She might confer with some groups or just listen to the conversations. She may use this time to provide some intervention or support for students who might need it. She may push some students to dig deeper and extend their thinking. Most importantly, she may identify the key information that needs to come up during the whole discussion at the end of the lesson. Finally, there's the return, where the class comes back together to share their thinking while the teacher facilitates the discussion. And because she paid such careful attention while the students were working, she's able to select specific students to share their ideas and support their classmates in finding connections between their strategies and move everyone's thinking forward. When teachers have a clear sense of the ideas they want to develop and they strategically select student work to bring to the discussions, then the teacher's agenda is fueled by student thinking and understanding. The difference is, with this approach, the students hold the authority because their ideas take center stage and not the teacher's. This shift in dynamic creates classroom cultures that truly value student thinking and agency in mathematics.
So that's a brief summary of kind of the shift that we are, I will refer to throughout this presentation. Our math team also came up with what is it that, how can we define the shift a little further for our teachers? So we're looking for programs that have the eight mathematical teaching practices. So establishing mathematical goals to focus learning, implement tasks that promote reasoning and problem-solving, using connected mathematical representations, facilitate meaningful mathematical discourse, pose purposeful questions that kids can relate to, build procedural fluency from conceptual understanding, support productive struggle in learning mathematics and elicit and use evidence of student thinking. So these are the known eight mathematical teaching practices. We also wanted to think of, look at programs that orchestrate a productive mathematical discussions by using the five steps of anticipating, monitoring, selecting, sequencing and connecting. This allows for deepest, deeper and focused teacher questioning and a focus on building understanding. Those were some of the criterias that we used when we started looking at programs. So we also were looking, like I said, the shifts that we wanted to expect. So lots of math talk, students involved in hands-on and visual explorations of math concepts that go beyond teacher demonstration. We wanted kids doing math, not just watching someone else do math. Students working together to discuss their thinking, balanced instruction that focused on skills and processes, opportunities for students to discuss varied approaches. That bullet point right there, opportunities for students to discuss varied approaches, that allows all students to access the problem. Because there's not one way to do it, this shift in teaching math promotes that there's multiple ways that you can solve math. And you don't have to necessarily follow one way of doing it that maybe doesn't make sense to you. It encourages students to think about solving math in a variety of ways and then making connections with the students around them that think differently. Frequent discussions that use students notice, developing rules and making connections between math ideas. Varied teaching formats and additional support for students who need it. Ongoing and varied assessment throughout the teaching process. Positive, engaging comments about mathematics, even when it requires perseverance. In the end, we wanted students to fall in love with math. We want them to feel like they are a math student, that they can be good at math and that they don't just learn math to apply to a problem or to pass an assessment, that they have this deep understanding of math. And so that when they get to the workforce, those jobs that require them to think and problem-solve and apply some principles that they know will be available to them because they will have those skills. So we started with some research. We looked at the What Works Clearinghouse and the ED reports. This is the current program that we are using in Envision that we've been using for multiple years. You can see that it does not meet the criteria for alignment. And because of that, they don't even rate it for usability. So we know we need a new program. These are the programs that we initially brought in after we started to do some research. We relied heavily on our Hamilton County math coaches because they work in multiple districts and have experience with multiple programs. They were able to really guide us to ones that will not get us to where we want to be or will not be suc- a successful implementation with teachers and ones that they've seen used in districts with some success. We brought in Reveal Math, Bridges, Eureka, Illustrative and then Intu. Once we started to review that, we immediately took out Bridges because of the intense rigor that it had and it was not very user-friendly for teachers or students. We knew immediately that was not a program that we felt would be best for our teachers and our students. So what we did is the reading specialists and math coaches looked deeply into each program and filled out a rubric that evaluated what the programs offered. Of the choices that we have here, Reveal Math scored, had earned twenty-five points in our review. Bridges, I said, we didn't even evaluate. Eureka scored eighteen. Illustrative Math scored thirty-one points on our rubric and Intu Math scored twenty-six. So we had some conversations about Intu and Reveal. In the end, we felt that Intu aligned a little bit more to the work that we were doing here in the district. So we chose to pilot the Intu Math program and the Illustrative Math program. Ideally with a pilot, this would have been started along earlier in the school year before really students got into their mathematical routines and really got accustomed to learning math the way that the teacher presents it. We didn't want to miss this opportunity to get a math adoption, seeing that we were able to move some funds around. So we did start this pilot at the second half of the year. I am the first to admit that it is not an ideal situation to do that and that each program had about four or five weeks that they could pilot. By the time we trained, the, the company's trained teachers, we got materials in. It also was very stressful for teachers because it was right, it was prior to testing. And there's a lot of pressure from teachers to get everything covered in math specifically before testing. Also, these programs require a shift in teaching and learning, like you saw. And because it's the middle of the year, the students did not have those structures, didn't have knowledge of those structures. We hadn't taught them the structures. We hadn't practiced the structures. So it was very difficult. I, I am not going to deny. It was very difficult for some teachers because all of a sudden, the kids are learning math in a different way. So our emphasis to the pilot teachers was that we know this might not be a super-successful implementation or pilot in your classroom. What we want you to look for is the potential in the program. So try some things out, look for the potential. We understand that it's, it may not lead to students making connections in one unit because they didn't have the prior skills that were taught earlier in the year that led them to the specific unit that you piloted. So it really was an emphasis on looking at the materials, what they offer and the potential of each program. So we worked really hard, you can see, to get pilot teachers from every grade and in every building. We were only, we were not successful in getting a fifth-grade teacher at Corrin Elementary, but you will also see that we incorporated two of our Northwest online teachers as well because we wanted to know what would this look like if we continued our Northwest online program as a virtual learning program? Would these programs fit into that plan as well? So we had a great, a great turnout for people that were willing to, to do this. And I want to give all of them a shout-out. It's not easy to do a math pilot, to say, okay, I'm going to give up what my routines have been in my class to try something completely different, especially given the time. So I give kudos to these teachers. I also want to recognize that every teacher in the district, grades two through five, had access to the training videos. So both companies had a two-hour presentation to the pilot teachers that we recorded, that went over the basics of their program and gave, and kind of walked them through the online platform as well as some of the, the paper materials.
Did all, did all the teachers look at those videos?
No.
Why not?
That's a great question. They were encouraged to watch the videos and they were also, I told each company that we needed some sort of... we needed some sort of demo site, some sort of online, temporary online access for teachers that could not pilot the program. So we had to purchase the materials for the Into Math pilot. They do not give free pilot materials. So we purchased that out of some curriculum funds. The Into Math program, HMH, will provide free materials for a pilot, but they limit it to 20 sets of materials. So we did have to make some decisions on what happens to the other people during this pilot. And we did talk and we, we kept the pilot at third, fourth, and fifth, and we, second grade did not pilot the Into Math. They agreed to send three kits that we did circulate around the district for at least second grade teachers to look at. They also had online access to the platform that they could go in and look around and see if they're, you know, kind of get a feel for it. So everyone did have access to that. I think we had about four weeks of online access for each platform for the teachers that did not pilot. Here's the ED report. You will notice that both programs rated highly. That was one of our requirements. Both meets expectations in terms of alignment and usability. To break it down, the Illustrative Math program scored consistently high in focus and coherence, rigor in mathematical practices. It lost some points in usability. When you click into it, the points that they lost is around the assessment pieces that they currently have in their program. When you look at Into Math, very similar. They lost a few points on rigor and mathematical practices, but when you dip into their usability, again, they lose points for assessment as well. So we have two solid programs that we presented to our teachers to review. So how did we get feedback? Because we knew this was a different way of shifting our teaching and our math specialists have been working all year long to shift that thinking. Some people really felt that this was a shift towards IM. It was a shift regardless of what program. It was a little bit more student facilitated learning, a little bit more of student academic talk that you would see in both programs. We gave the teachers a rubric to complete based upon the potential of each program. And we asked them to complete the rubric after each pilot that they did. So everyone did Illustrative Math first. The reason for that is because that company was very quick in getting us materials. HMH was a little slower and delayed and we didn't have time to waste. So I said, everyone just do Illustrative, we'll get that done, and then everyone can do HMH. That also allowed our math specialists to be really focused on those classrooms and supporting every one and one program at a time. When we got the rubrics back, they, the rubric scores did not help us a lot. We had an uneven return rate. So we had 37 Illustrative Math rubrics returned and only 16 of the Into Math rubrics returned. The rubrics were based upon questions such as, does the resource reach the full depth of standards, of the standards? Is the application, does it have the application of mathematical concepts in engaging ways? Does it embed tasks with multiple entry points? Those are like three of, there was probably 30 questions on there that they rated from strongly disagree to strongly agree. Again, the rubric was designed to just look at the program in isolation and not really your experience using it or the results that you had in your classroom because we knew that they weren't going to be the best, given our parameters. The rubric ended up being a way for people to tell me what they thought about the programs. So for example, in the Illustrative Math rubric, on those three questions that I read to you, reaches full depth of, full depth of the standard, application of mathematical concepts in engaging ways, and embeds task with multiple entry points. The program scored ones all the way to fives. The program either does or doesn't have multiple entry points. So I found that across the board with the Illustrative Math rubric scores. The Into Math was a little bit, was a little bit more aligned. I had to really go by the comments. There was a comment, that way people could give me some feedback. And so I went a lot with the, the comments were very helpful when we ended up making the final decision. I also continually met with math specialists. We meet in person every other Tuesday, but every Tuesday, they were able to log on to a Zoom with both companies throughout the pilot periods to give them feedback, ask questions, get more support. So they were very involved in, in learning about these programs. And I was able to have some teacher conversations. I had multiple people reach out to talk to me or to invite me to see lessons. I was able to get to about half of the people before a decision had to be made. Some I did have to cancel based on things that happened in buildings or staffing meetings that we needed to squeeze in. I will get back to everyone as part of my next step plans. I will tell you how I'm going to listen to all teachers. But, you know, some of the comments that they gave me, you heard them already, very similar to what I saw in the comments section. Concerns about the components of Illustrative Math. There were concerns in terms of Into Math about it being very similar to what we already do. That it definitely was better for our lower students, that was a comment. It had a lot of bells and whistles as well. Those were comments that I heard throughout. The Illustrative Math, several people were very honest and said, I'm a math person. My colleagues who are not, this will scare them. It is such a shift, people are going to be afraid. And I, I appreciate that honesty. One person wrote, students are making great connections and this provides an opportunity for them to understand the why. But we did hear things like, it needs more practice, it needs homework, I need something to grade. And I felt like one person kind of summed it up best. They said, we're really going to need to work on supporting our students and how to learn differently because right now, our students are used to sitting, getting, and practicing. And I think that speaks to why we need to make a shift. So I will talk about some of the feedback that I received a little bit later in the presentation. So we are making a recommendation for Illustrative Math. And both programs were solid programs. But when we looked at the actual implementation, when we talked to the principals who were going in and observing some of these lessons, the math specialists, the math coaches, and overall the programs. So what I was doing is I was pulling a lesson out of both programs on the same skill and kind of comparing them. Illustrative Math makes the shift much better to where we want to go. It's a much cleaner shift. It's a much clearer shift. There's not fuzzy lines. Four are Into Math folks. Some principals reported going in to do observations of classrooms and not even realizing they were doing a different program because it was the exact same way that they always taught. It was very teacher-led and we're really trying to shift away from that. The Illustrative Math program is much better aligned to our instructional framework and directly supports our work around the strategic plan and our portrait of graduate competencies. The communication piece is huge. Kids are always talking in these classrooms. Critical thinking, absolutely. It's going to push them to do that, to think about, how can I solve this problem? It encourages perseverance in that learner's mindset that we said we want our students to have, and it requires some adaptability. It is very aligned to our work around academic teaming in the secondary. Although we're not moving forward officially with academic teaming in the elementaries, many of our buildings are still approaching that topic through professional development next year and really working to start seeing that in their buildings. It's rigorous for teach, it's rigorous and teacher facilitated learning. It's designed to support both teachers and students in their understanding of math. I like Illustrative Math, the way that they embed teacher professional development in there. There is a lot of explanation. They give unit overviews, they give lesson overviews, they explain to the teacher, this is how the lesson's going to go, and here's why we're doing it this way. Here's the understanding the students are supposed to get out of this. So it's designed to both support our teachers and our students as they grow. And it is aligned to our middle school math program. So the materials that come with this is, there's, there's a teacher resource pack, which is paper, student workbooks, which are in black and white. Illustrative Math doesn't have a lot of bells and whistles because it's not a lot about complete the work in the workbook. It's not a lot about keep your eyes on the screen for a long period of time. The slide presentations, which are already designed for our teachers, are just about introducing the problem and then the kids get right to work. They're working with their groups. So I absolutely agree. It doesn't have a lot of color or bells and whistles. But I'm okay with that because I don't want kids staring at a workbook. I don't want kids staring at a screen. I want kids talking about math. But we also know that the student workbooks are important to our teachers. They, they want that paper. They want the kids to be able to do some things. The, the access to the online platform, like I said, it already has the lessons designed for the teachers. The slide presentations are there. There are lesson narratives with key questions for them to ask to get that deeper understanding. It includes formal and summative assessments as well. This program will decrease the amount of time teachers spend actually collecting resources. The time will be spent really understanding the lesson and growing themselves mathematically and as a math teacher. That's where the time will come in. So what's this going to look like? A typical IM classroom looks like this. There's a launch. So if you, if you remember the video earlier, this is where the teacher makes sure that the students understand the question, their student work time. So they're either working by themselves, with a partner, or in a small group to kind of process through and see what they, how they can figure out this problem, what information they know, what connections can they make. And then at the end is when the teacher becomes a big part of the learning and makes those connections and helps, helps the kids connect all the dots instead of automatically connecting them for them and then just having the kids do this rote practice. This is the, the job of the teacher. So teacher ensures that student understands the question. Students work individually. Teacher monitors, listens, and questions. Students work in groups. Again, teacher monitors, listens, and asks questions for understanding. So a lot of opportunity for the teacher to collect some informal data, to listen to who's making the connections, who's not, what group do I need to intervene with? What, what key question can I ask to maybe restart their thinking or get them thinking down the right path? And then at the end, the teacher brings it all together and helps the students synthesize their learning. I understand that my presentation carries a little bit of weight, but I also understand that I'm not boots on the ground. I'm not the ones that are using this. So while I acknowledge that there are some teachers that are very fearful of this program or do not believe it is what our students need, we also have teachers that believe strongly that this is what our students need. And so they are here tonight and they would like to speak to you as well. So in no particular order, I'm not sure how they're going to come up, but I want to thank the following for being here and taking time. We have second grade teacher from Taylor, Michelle Carty. Second grade teacher from P R E, Annie Carroll. Fourth grade teacher from P R E, Kristin Knapp. Fifth grade teacher from Monford Heights, Lisa Lourda. We also have Katie Westrick here. She is currently a math specialist, but she was a middle school math teacher last year. So she can speak to that. And then P R E principal, Jamelle Weathers, is here and would like to say a little bit about the program.
But not all of us. Hi everyone. Thank you so much for letting us be a part of this dial. We're really excited to talk to you all. I only have a couple minutes, so I thought I would just...
We've got all night, so take your time.
I don't want to take everyone else's time.
It's okay.
But I went ahead and trinedies for you all to share. I, along with Kristin, and I know Katie and Michelle, we're all really, really, really passionate about this. I'm going to make sure it's not the one with all my notes.
Okay, got you. Give me, thank you.
We're all really passionate about this program and it means so much to us to come and get to talk to you about it. So let's kind of dive in. I know Lori already mentioned, it does touch on a lot of the competencies that we talk about as a district as a whole. So when we're looking at what our students are expected to learn when they graduate here, three things really stuck out to me, and that is communication, critical thinking, and a learner's mindset. IM is encompassing all of those pieces. And we know that COVID has sort of set back our communication, our collaboration, especially in our classrooms. And so this IM piece is one of the ways that I feel like we can foster that when talking about math, which is really amazing. So let's, so we already talked about the drawbacks. We know the drawbacks. We know it has been really hard with this pilot, but I have seen some really amazing things in my classroom. I've seen genuine excitement when learning about math. They're authentically learning about these concepts. I'm not standing up in front of them and telling them, this is how you need to solve this problem. They are taking ownership of their learning and that is so powerful. They are challenged at every single level. I have three students on I E Ps. I have two gifted students. And then I have kids who are everywhere in between. So I also have that large array of students. And I'm seeing students connecting topics. I'm seeing students building on each other's learning, and I think that is an amazing thing to see in a second grade classroom. I also have sort of seen the shift where I thought I was going to have to be doing a lot of the, a lot of the teaching, but I feel like they have taught me more than I could have ever imagined. I'm not a math person and I feel like they, they didn't even think they were math people. But they are coming up with these awesome creative responses and they're critically thinking about these problems. And I think it's building confidence in them that they didn't have before. I think that if we pilot this and we go forward with this, it's all going to be worth it because we're going to see communication, collaboration in our classrooms. We're going to see students fostering mathematical talk that's genuine. It's not a cookie cutter response. And I think we're going to see students value more of the how I can solve a problem rather than I just need to get the right answer. And I think that's something that's really going to help our students in the long run. So again, I don't want to take too much of your time, but I really do think that this program is so powerful, it's, it's really has changed my students' perspective on math. It's changed my perspective on math. Let's give this a fair shot and see where this goes. I really do think it's worth it. Thank you so much.
I'm Michelle Carty. I'm a second grade teacher at Taylor Elementary. So me and I have something in common. She's also a second grade teacher. I am a product of this district. I went to White Oak Middle. I went to Corrin High School. So I'm a really proud teacher in this district now. I've been teaching, this is my third year. But I will say, we have had no math curriculum before this. Like this is my third year teaching, I had nothing before this. So it did feel really nice to have something that I don't have to go home and spend hours on unpaid, you know, planning and buying things off of teacher's pay teachers and planning my own lessons and things like that. It really felt like it was research-based and like it was meant to go in the order of teaching kids the things that they need to learn in a research-based way, like that really supports their learning on a continuum. And what I will say is that I don't feel like it was a waste of time in my classroom. I can't speak from the perspective of a third, fourth, or fifth grade teacher with state testing. However, I feel that this program is really important because it's not just preparing students to take a test. It's preparing them to be lifelong learners. And I'm saying that because I've been a perfectionist my whole life. I have been a good student my whole life. I was a straight A student. I paid attention in class. I did the whole I do, you do, we do. And when I got to high school, I couldn't retain any math that I was learning. I stopped being able to memorize formulas, no matter how hard I paid attention to my teacher. And that's because I didn't, I don't think I truly had that mathematic, mathematical like concept, like built in me, like those critical thinking skills, those empowering thinking skills that kids have to have when they're thinking about math because it was always just told to me. And I learned really well and I did well on the test and I did what I was supposed to do. But when it came time to be a young adult or an adult going into college, those math courses got really, really... courses got really, really difficult for me. And I think that that happens to a lot of us that enter the real world and then we're like, oh, I was a great student my whole life. Like, why can't I, you know, achieve this now? And it's because we've built ourselves on being obedient and knowing what we're supposed to do in school and following the rules without really, like in this program, what it does is it really helps students like take ownership of their learning and collaborate with one another. I had students coming up to the board and I would just be like, go for it. Like I, I didn't even question it because in this program, I taught two and three-digit addition and subtraction with and without regrouping. And in the past with the like Envisions program, it teaches them one strategy a day and then you move on and they don't practice that strategy unless you build in the time in that lesson for them to do it. This time around, I had kids adding and subtracting on a number line, breaking it downs into hundreds, tens, and ones and adding them sequentially. I had kids using the old fashioned way. Like it really enabled the kids to pick the strategy that they felt was best for them and their learning. And their tests showed it, that every kid did amazing. But like what Lori was saying too, we didn't start the year with anything like this. When I started that illustrative math pilot, I changed my whole room. I made anchor charts. We talked about problem solving language. I set up bins for their workbooks. We said, we talked about center rotations. We talked about how to work with a partner. And the conversations that I heard walking around were really, really meaningful. And I think it showed when the kids like took that final kind of summative assessment to show me everything that they learned. It was so much more powerful because now they have a lot more confidence in themselves than what I've seen in the past. So I'm a big proponent of this. And also I, you know, just to speak to what I said at the beginning, not to take too much more time, but like I'm in my fourth year of the Ressa program right now and we're reading a book that this district has suggested that I read called Empower, What Happens When Students Own Their Learning. And it's, the biggest message is really sending to people like, we as teachers are not meant to just prepare students to follow rules their whole life. Their future is what they're creating. We're not going to be here one day when they're, when they're there in the future. And they have to be able to problem solve on their own and come up with creative solutions and believe in themselves and feel empowered in their learning. And I really think that this big shift is, it's a big shift. Like I work with a lot of people who are really scared of it, but I'm also telling you that it's really powerful and that there are people, like if we just use it too fresh in from the beginning and really like believe in our students and believe, you know, I've heard of people say that, you know, well, we can only teach this with like gifted and high kids. I don't have a high room. I don't. I have kids that are still struggling to write a sentence and like write their own name, but even those writing pieces in the workbooks didn't stop them from learning the math that we were supposed to learn or, you know, practicing concepts that we were practicing or deepening their thinking. And at the end of the day, I'm not really checking to see if, you know, they got that sentence written perfectly with a period at the end in a math lesson. I'm more worried about like, can they speak their mind? Can they explain their thinking? Can they talk about why they're doing what they're doing? And that's really, really valuable. So thank you for taking the time to listen.
Just a quick question. Did you do both programs or did you just...
So that is one that, so unfortunately I did not get to do both programs. I'm a second grade teacher, so we weren't offered the Intu Math program. I did look at the materials, but I wish I had time to pilot it too. And the one thing about illustrative math that I do think we need to consider if we do adopt is that it is a 180-day program. And we don't really, we haven't really accounted for the days that we have off of school and service days, things like that. So the curriculum would need to be adjusted. But I really like the flexibility in learning. There's lots of center days in between and opportunities for just different kinds of learning in the classroom. So yeah, any other questions?
I'd just like to comment, this is important stuff to me and I assume to the rest of us. And it's, we're in the business of teaching students, so this is critical information to hear. So I don't want you to feel rushed and, you know, get your message across. Right. But uh... Thank you. Thank you for coming. I just wanted to get that out there that, you know, I was...
You might regret that.
You know, we have all night, but we don't have all night. You know, but we...
Your husband just did this. No, I'm just kidding.
But it's important, I think, to, you know, that we get this right in going forward. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Lourda. I teach fifth grade at Monfort Heights. And a little bit of background that I think is important that you know about me is I also taught middle school for a really long time, longer than I'd like to admit, at White Oak Middle School. So I have a little bit of experience with what the students came to me as a seventh grade math teacher. And I can tell you, I know that the elementary teachers and especially the ones that I work with now are very dedicated, hardworking individuals. And I know that they taught them the topics, but I can also tell you, they didn't remember any of them. We spent so much time in middle school relearning how to add fractions and how to, you know, regroup and all of the things that I know they spent lots of time in elementary school learning that I spent, like that frustrated me. And so I spent a lot of time throughout my career just reading on my own and researching different ways to learn math. So for me, this wasn't as big of a shift as I think it was for some other people. I read a book probably six or seven years ago called Becoming the Math Teacher You Wish You'd Had. And at the very beginning of the book, she talked about how mathematicians describe math and they used words like creative and flexible and beautiful. And they compared it to how kids in math classes described math. And it was very different and very sad to me. So I have been trying for a long time to try to get that switched up. That book has been really important to me. And a lot of that book was about student voice. So I have spent hours and hours and summers and evenings and weekends in the last few years trying to find activities that fit that way of teaching. And illustrative math did that, does that very well. So I think my students maybe were a little bit less shell shocked by it because we had already been kind of doing that, those kinds of things. But their voice, when you sit back and listen to them have the conversations that they have as they work through problems is really inspiring and wonderful. And the illustrative math supports that really well, just with the tasks that they have as well as the teaching, the actual guide for the teachers. Like it will say in the lesson, as you are circulating through and look for this kid who's thinking about it this way and look for a kid who's thinking about it this way. And then suggest that you choose those kids to show their work. So that's what I did. They love showing their work. They got very comfortable coming up and showing the class. And the great thing is, at least once a class, someone solved a problem in a way that I never would have thought. So that was very eye opening to me and very, I enjoyed that, just, I just enjoyed that. But I think it was good for the other kids too. As far as worrying about our kids that maybe aren't quite so ready for higher level thinking, I think that this is actually a way that makes differentiation a little bit easier because these tasks have very different entry points. So a kid who maybe doesn't feel like the strongest math student can still get something out of that and can start somewhere. And a kid who maybe is starting up here is going to start at a different place and can take it to a different place. Like I like to think of it like low ceiling, or sorry, low floor, high ceiling. And so anybody can find an entry point, but there's lots, there's not really an endpoint. So kids can keep going even when they've kind of found the answer. And that was what I found. If I had a kid who was finished really quickly and I went over and said, well, have you thought about that or how would it change if you did that? It really, it took their thinking in a different level. And instead of me giving them a second activity, they just took that activity to a different level. And then my learners who maybe were struggling a little bit, when they got to hear their classmates present work, they got to learn a lot from that. But I think the thing that might have been surprising is that some of those higher level kids are really fast calculators and kind of get that piece of it quickly, but struggle to, at least in my experience, struggle to explain their whys. And listening to their classmates who maybe traditionally weren't thought of as, as high level, they got to hear a lot of different connections that were made. And I think for me, that's maybe the biggest part. We are given a set of standards that we're supposed to teach and they're just a list of skills. And they look like they're a list of skills, but they're not. They are over, they are interwoven, they connect, they overlap. And that's what I thought illustrative math also did really well, is that there isn't like, this is standard one, this is when you teach standard one. It was like, this is a lesson and it addresses these three standards. And it really does that. I've seen other programs that said that they did that and I didn't feel like it really did. And then of course, the collaboration. I guess I already talked about that a little bit, but I just felt like my kids got to talk so much. I did pilot the Intu Math. I'm still working through it to finish up the lesson, the unit that we were on. And honestly, I didn't like it very much. I thought it was, I mean, I did not like it, but I didn't like it as much. I thought it was too scaffolded where it led them to the answer to in a particular way. And I would like us to respect our students' intelligence and that they can think on their own. And I would like to encourage them because we always complain, they don't think, they don't think, they don't think. But we do all the thinking for them. So I felt like this program takes that part of it out, which we do with the best of intentions because we want to help them, but pushes them to be uncomfortable in their learning sometimes and push through that. So I, I've, I love it. I hope that it is what we go with.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Kristin Knapp. I'm fourth grade from Pleasant Run Elementary. I feel it's important to tell you, I've taught in this district for 18 years and have taught language arts for all of them until last year. So when I tell you that everyone watching this right now, hearing me speak about math is shocked because I am not a math teacher. I can readily tell you, I'm not. I came into math last year being inclusive, you know, because of COVID and I enjoyed it. It was fun. It was something new, right? So this year, when we had that opportunity again, I worked with my math specialist and, you know, they, we had the benefit of having Mrs. Westrich come from the middle school. I was also a middle school teacher. So sure, I would love to help prepare middle schoolers, right? I know, I remember banging my head in sixth grade, like, why don't they know this? So they, you know, would talk to me about IM and that was available. So I started teaching the way, I guess I had always taught, the way math was given, you know, to me and the way I had taught it the year before. And then Mrs. Westrich offered to come in one day. She said, I'll just come in and do an IM lesson. We'll see how it goes. And she did. And I just, I was in awe of it. I sat there and watched my kids like say things and have conversations. And I was like, wow, where has this been? What's happening here? And so I just jumped in. And so I started, probably a little different. I started IM in probably early September. And I have been doing it faithfully every day since. I have never wavered off of IM. And to be very honest with you, when the conversation came as to maybe we wouldn't choose IM, I wondered how I could go about going around that. Would I have to do this other program? Could I continue doing IM? I already have everything ready to go. Do I have to do it? That's how strongly I believe in it, that I would kind of bulk the system because I just think, I have never in my life seen aha moments like I have this year in 18 years of teaching. A couple of examples, I have a student, well, no, let me tell you for myself. Multiplication comes up and I was like baffled, like, why are we talking about rectangles the entire time? Like, I don't get it. How are we getting, what am I just going to teach them all these strategies for how to multiply? And then one day I had the aha moment when I was like, oh, the area of a rectangle is multiplication. But all of a sudden, it wasn't just about, here are the seven different strategies you can multiply. It was them conceptually understanding what does it mean when you multiply two numbers together? What does that actually look like? And they were able to, every single day, they say something in class that I just say, oh, wow. Sometimes they say things that I don't even understand, but then like another kid explains it in another way. And I'm like, yep, that's exactly right. You guys got that. Because they, they're running the class. I'm just a facilitator and I'm just there to keep things moving, but this is their classroom. This is their learning that they're getting from each other, from themselves, and I'm just there moving it along. I had another student who struggles in math and I watched her just recently do fractions and she struggled, she struggled, she struggled. And then halfway through, it was a span of like 15 lessons on fractions. And halfway through, all of a sudden, she was like, oh, so like when we do this, that's what the equivalent fractions, when we just multiply the same, you know, it was just, I mean, that's the stuff that we, you can't get. Like that just doesn't happen every single day. It should, but we give them so much that we don't let, we don't, they don't get opportunities to think for themselves. This gives them so many opportunities to think for themselves and make those aha moments. I have actually talked with our Hamilton County coaches, got an asking, find me this program in language arts. I need, I have, something's missing in my language arts that it's been missing. I don't know what it is, but I need it. And we have been, we've sat down and debriefed about what does this program have that I can implement into my other contents, which I've started doing because I just, I feel so strongly about it. It's got the rigor. I'm also on Portrait of a Graduate and I sit in there and I see every one of these things in there. I see where we want our kids to go. And I, I kind of get upset when I hear people say our students aren't ready. Why aren't they ready? Why not our kids? Like when, when do they get to be like all the other kids in other districts? Why not our kids? They deserve it. Is it going to be easy? No, it's not. I almost bailed on in division. I thought, oh gosh, we're missing it. Like break out the worksheets. Come on, kids, we gotta just practice. But my math coaches and my math specialists were so supportive and just stick with it, stick with it, stick with it, don't fail on it, believe in the program. And I did, and I was so glad that I did because I truly believe now they understand division, not just a strategy, they understand how in the world division works. And then when we moved into the next content or the next subject, I saw them bringing that division with them. So I finally feel like I have something that's working. I want it in all my contents now. I really genuinely feel strongly about that. We're not, you know, we, something was brought up about the color. It's black and white on the paper. I don't care. They don't care because the conversation they're having is not black and white. That conversation is filled with each one of their own experiences, with each one of the things that they believe. And they're coming up with things that are beyond what this paper says, hopefully your students come up with. They're coming up with other things. Why not our kids? Why don't they deserve that? Like, why are we not giving them that? There was another really big point. Hold on. Oh, lesson planning. This is the easiest lesson planning, I mean, if it matters, I know this is about kids, but the teachers too, that I've ever done. I know the next, you know, this is the next lesson. Everything is there. I don't go hunting for anything. I can print the lesson off. It takes me right through it. But I'm a teacher and so I make my teacher moves when I feel a teacher move needs to be made. Maybe I don't, you know, follow it exactly. I asked this question ahead of this one or, you know, whatever. I get to make those teacher moves. It's still ultimately my decision on what I know my kids need. But I spend far less time planning math than I do any other subject. And I would say, when you get those programs with all the bells and whistles, I've been on adoptions with that. And when I was given the Intu Math stuff, I looked at that and thought, what, what now? Like there was so much material, I felt completely overwhelmed. I thought, I bet you there's a lot of great stuff, but I won't use half of it because I won't have the time to sit and sort through it to figure out where it needs to go. And I think unfortunately bells and whistles sell, but then they just end up collecting dust like I have with some of my other past adoptions in other areas. I lost the thought. Oh, no, here it is. The other big thing I would say to you is I know right now, if you ask me about any of the students in my class, I can tell you exactly where they are in math. I know exactly what they know. I know exactly what they don't know. I know exactly where I can continue to work with them. I cannot necessarily say that same thing for language arts and that saddens me. But why I say that is not to like diminish myself as a language arts teacher, but I'm telling you, that's what this program is giving me. I have, because I'm in all of their conversations, it's not me just standing and talking, I'm in there with them. I hear the way they're thinking. I see where the breakdown is. I can work with that and then we're able to grow together. And I just, I feel like we are missing out on a huge opportunity for our kids to go to the next level. It won't be easy. It'll be a struggle, but I definitely think it's worth it.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Katie Westridge and I'm the Pleasant Run Elementary, one of the Pleasant Run Elementary math specialists. But I did come from White Oak Middle School, so I did teach illustrative math there for two years. And just like everyone else said, I saw the amazing program and the results from this in the middle school. I saw the risk-taking that my students have never had, never took before. I had an advanced class with gifted students, but I also had classes with IEP students. And I would say that my other class took the most risks. They weren't afraid to dive in or find other strategies. And I saw all of the aha moments throughout every bell. One of, one of IM's math design's principles is coherent progression. With IM, students view math as a connected set of ideas to make sense as they get older. This support helps to bring in students' prior knowledge from the upcoming grade level work. This is why IM should be introduced in the elementary grades. Vertical alignment is key to ensure that students will have in-depth exposures to concepts to prepare them for the following years. IM is most beneficial when the students are introduced to math with critical thinking as a normal expectation in elementary schools. So we want them to have that critical thinking as early as we can. We want our students to be critical thinkers, problem solvers, risk takers, collaborators, and investigators before they reach the middle school. With IM, students learn to embody a learner's mindset that will positively impact all aspects of their Northwest experience. I know this is a different way of teaching, but we are not here to prepare our students for our past. We are here to prepare them for their future.
Mentioned teaching at White Oak.
Yes.
Why do you think the test scores are so low if that is such a success?
Well, last year was our first year truly implementing it. And I think that we can all say, last year was very difficult in a way different way of teaching. So I think that that has a big impact on it as well.
From an administrator standpoint, uh, nope, gotta be able to see ya. I am in classrooms, what?
You might want to leave them off.
I am in classrooms seeing teachers teach and students learn regularly. And when IM came in, there, there were conversations about, ugh, this, oh, I don't know about this. But the students that I saw learning in the classes that were piloting IM and using that as their base structure for teaching were so excited. They were excited to talk. They were excited to collaborate with each other. And in our world, as we've had recent conversations, they learned, they're learning how to disagree in a nice respectful way. Because they don't all agree with how they're going to solve a problem, but they all see that they can get to an endpoint together. And that has been really fun to see in our students. And they're not thinking, they're, they're not focusing on, what's this math trick? I was a middle school math teacher a long time ago. Don't be mad at me because I taught like a trick about cross multiply and divide and there was a whole dance with it. I've now learned that that was really bad, so I apologize to all of those students that I taught. But we're now teaching students to think. And that's what we want our kids to do. We want our kids to know how to think and to know how to persevere through the hard thinking that it takes to learn this math. My colleagues would tell you that I would not, it would not be a Jamel moment if I didn't tell a story about my kid. So just going to stick with that. This weekend, he was fixing a washing machine debacle that he caused. And I was helping and I was getting ready to let him out of it. And I said, you know what? Forget it. It's too, taking too long. Just, just forget it. He said, Mom, I got this. Go away. I'm gonna figure it out. And sure enough, an hour and a half later, he came up, he said, it's done. And I thought, that is like, that, proud mom moment because he finished it and I can now do laundry. But he also show, reminded me that that's what our kids need to be able to do. When we're, when we're just teacher-led instruction, we're not training them to be thinkers. And we say in our Portrait of a Graduate and all of our future learnings, the videos that we watch about what jobs might be possible out there, it's about thinking. It's about seeing the possibilities that we don't know yet. And so I really feel strong about that IM could help with this move. I heard statements from teachers like, the kids love this. This is, this is great. I heard a teacher who was resistant and hesitant to start. And then once they were into the teaching, we're like, oh, they're getting it. And I'm having less behaviors because they're actually getting to talk, which is something they like to do. And I had another teacher say, after we took the math state test, said, this actually helped my students prepare for the state test and I didn't even know it. Because they were thinking about what the question actually asked. Because they had to think through questions to learn the math. And then from an administrative point, you know, we're doing all this work with LSI, with the Portrait of a Graduate. And, and at PRE, one of our goals is to, for students to have autonomy in learning. And this just kind of merges all into this. We talk about rigor of learning and part of that is partner work. And this just has it embedded in it. And so I have not, not seen things that are bad. And in fact, I called Lori and said, if we don't go with IM, can PRE just be an IM school and adopt, adopt it for others, other places? Because obviously I have teachers who are really excited about the impact it's having on our students. So I thank you for listening and considering and for always, you know, directing those comments that you get back to us so that we can, that we can help them.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I want to thank the teachers and the principals that all stuck around this late in the evening to support this presentation. I, I genuinely thank you from the bottom of my heart. If you know anything about me as a leader, you know that I am passionate about our kids and believe that they deserve every opportunity that any other student in any other school gets. And so I have a hard time justifying not giving this opportunity to our students. If you also know me as a leader, you know that I do have very high expectations, but I always follow it up with high support. So that I know is what we need for this program to be successful. So our, my next step is to ensure that all teachers have the same experience as those that just came up here and share all of the excitement that they have on a Monday night at eight forty-five regarding their math teaching. So what does that look like? So I want to be able to respond to some teacher feedback. I know, I know that you are getting some comments and I believe some of those comments are coming from teachers who didn't even pilot the program. And so they're kind of jumping to some conclusions. I don't think they have all the information. And I even think some of our pilot teachers don't have all the information, given the short amount of time. So students don't know how to learn in this manner. You're absolutely right. They don't right now. We have to teach those structures. So one plan that I have in place is in the elementaries, we always take the first three weeks of school to build relationships, cultures, teach routines and procedures. One way that I want to work to support teachers in implementing this program is designing some lesson plans for the first three weeks of school that teaches all of the IM structures. So they'll be practicing those in a very non-threatening way. Maybe not with academics, but they'll get used to talking with people. They'll get used to doing those structures so that when we do start teaching math, those will already be in place. We know that our teachers, some of our teachers lack competence in, in teaching math and they're just afraid of this program. And I completely understand. We are trying to come up with a very aggressive PD plan for our math program. All of our in-service days are designated right now for letters work, letters training, and giving the teachers time to work on their letters work. So we need to be creative in how we support our teachers in math. I've talked to the principals about their grade level meetings that they have every week. And in most of our buildings, they rotate, one week is language arts, one week is math, language arts, math. I have asked permission to maybe steal those math meetings to work on supporting the pilot, which would look like math coaches and math specialists meeting with our teachers and going through and helping them lesson plan. Going through the unit overviews, going through the lesson overviews, modeling certain aspects of it, pointing out things that they want to make them aware and making sure they have a deep understanding of what to look for or maybe what to do if students aren't making the connection. On those off weeks, we would make our math specialists and math coaches available on days where the grade level typically gets together and plans together. So while it wouldn't be a requirement like the grade level meetings would be, they would have an opportunity every week for a math specialist and a math coach to lesson plan with them in, in this process. We will use some of our professional learning through the illustrative math program to support our math specialists. Our math coaches are very knowledgeable of this program. They've supported other districts in the implementation of this. But our principals have also expressed interest in, we want to become experts. We want to know how to support our teachers. When they come to us for coaching next year, we want to be able to support them and help them because ultimately we want our teachers to be successful. So we know that we need to always be available to support them in this program. There is a lack of student practice in this program. This program is not designed for a lot of just repeat practice and that is a shift. The illustrative math, I'm sorry, the LearnZillion company who is, created the illustrative, illustrative math as a program, Imagine Learning has taken it and has adapted it for elementary and created the online platform and workbooks. They, this is their first year of implementation and they've heard loud and clear from people across the country that we still need some student practice. So I've been involved in conference calls and webinars with them to show some of the improvements that they are making for next year. I have, I've seen the new platform that has additional student practice pages for each lesson that teachers can either connect to Google Classroom and students can complete electronically or they can download and copy and give it as a worksheet. So I do believe that there is some additional student practice there. That could address some of our concerns with grades. But another concern that our math specialists actually brought up before we even started piloting, because we looked at, when we looked at the programs, we said, what are they missing? What's going to be an issue? And one of the things that was brought up for illustrative math was that it does not contain a spiral review. And many of our teachers really like that aspect of math is continually having the kids practice the skills so it remains fresh in their mind. So before we even decided to start our pilot, the math specialists committed to, if we go with a program that does not have a spiral review, because several of them did not. We would create a spiral review for each grade level that incorporates the grade below, the skills that they should have learned the year before, along with any previously taught skill up to that point so that they're constantly practicing and being able to apply the learning that they've had. Those we figure could be great homework assignments. They also can be for grades because all of the learning that will be in the spiral review will be previously taught material. So we think we can, we can work around some of those and I'm also very open to listening to what else teachers need. Again, the, it's too difficult for our lower achieving students. I don't think we ever lower the bar for any of our students. If it's good enough for our students that are higher achieving, it needs to be good enough for our lower achieving students. They just need more support. And, and I think we've heard tonight from teachers who have students that are lower achieving, that it can be done. So we want to make sure that we keep the bar high for all of our students. I want to, before we get to questions, I plan on meeting with every grade level at every building beginning next week. So I don't want to just sit in front of an entire school and talk to them, but I want to give them kind of a shortened version. I want them to understand the why. I also want to make sure that they understand the program. And if they haven't visited the online platform, I want to be able to show them what they do have access to. I also want to listen. I need to listen to see, what is the stress? What are the stressors? Where is the anxiety coming from? What do we still need for this program, for those that piloted it? What else is it lacking? That I can work with the illustrative math company, I can work with Imagine Learning, I can work with our math specialists and our math coaches to fill those gaps. We know that we need to sit down and figure out from here, with any program, now what? Where are the gaps? How do we align it? How do we pace it? Those are all of our next steps. We just made this decision last week. I wanted to get it out to the teachers prior to the board meeting today. The teachers deserve to know what was going to be on the board meeting. And so that happened on Thursday. So I think these grade level meetings at every building will be pretty powerful. I want to give everyone a voice, but I also want to make sure that everyone has the information that they need to truly make a statement about the program. I also want the teachers to know that I believe in them. I believe in their ability to teach math. Whether they believe in themselves or not, I'll take it, make it my personal mission to build their competence as a math teacher. I want them to know from my mouth that I believe in them because I know that some of them are very, very afraid. Shifting this, what if I'm not successful? What if my principal comes in and observes me? I get all of that. But I do believe in our teachers. I believe we have some great teachers in our district and I believe that they can do this. If they just open their minds, give it a chance. You know, in conclusion, IM makes the shift to where we want to go and how we want to empower our students to be mathematical thinkers, much better than the Intu Math program. I think Kristin said it beautifully. Is it going to be easy? No. Nothing great ever is. It's going to be a challenge. I'm up to that challenge. As the, as part of the curriculum department that oversees elementary, it is my job to constantly look at the needs of elementary and then figure out how to support those needs. I am competent in my ability to do that and I am competent that this is the program that we should go with. I hope that you guys take all this into consideration as information in regards to the program. And then I will answer any questions if you have any.
Change is difficult for a lot of people. And since there have been a program for nine years or whatever, I think this is, but could we get more math coaches, specialists to come in and to, you know, instead of having one in a, in a school, well, let's have two or three or something, that they can get these concepts and get these kids on the right path?
So we were able to bring back the math coaches from Hamilton County. We knew that that was going to be important. They are in the buildings, I believe, two days a week. I'm looking at Brenda.
What about coming in three or four days a week? Is that a possibility? Can we do that kind of stuff? What, what's?
I think as Lori goes around and meets with people and we determine the need, then that will help. But those are all options that if, you know, there is that need for people to have additional access.
Yeah, if one school needs an extra math coach, you know, a week or something like that or a couple of weeks or whatever, I mean, is that an option? We can do something like that?
We can definitely look at it.
And then just like the professional development, I think that is absolutely imperative for these teachers that are having angst about switching if we do this.
Absolutely.
I think it's important that we give them every tool to be successful.
The, the program that we want to adopt has made some adjustments to that as well. So they're now making for next year, video unit overviews so that it's not just reading of the material, that they'll be able to watch someone model things and talk about the overviews. They're also creating videos that show best practice instruction. So if you're not sure how this, this structure works in the class with the kids working together, there's a video that will show that to them so they can actually see it instead of just guessing like, is this what I'm supposed to do?
When you said videos earlier and I asked, well, did they all watch them? And you said, no. And then my question was, well, why, if this is, I mean, this is pretty important, I think. And like Matt said, I think this is really important. Why weren't the teachers, look, you got to watch this. We want you to watch this video on this new program that may become to fruition in our district? So I think that's something that needs to be done. At least they need to watch this and, and listen to it. You know, if they come back and they say, well, you know, I don't like it, okay, great. But give it an effort, give it a try and see what it's all about.
I can definitely work with the principals to carve out time to do that during their day. Absolutely. And then the videos for next year, that would be part of that, that coaching, professional development at the grade level meetings to guarantee that everyone has access and is watching.
Jim, one of the things that I think is really nice is with the middle school being a couple of years ahead, we have some outstanding implementations in the middle school. So not only can they watch videos, but they can see our kids being successful with this program. Is it across the board? Absolutely not.
Sure.
But Katie was an example when she was teaching IM where we sent people through her classroom on a regular basis to see what this looks like. And we have some other teachers like that who actually have some pretty solid data this year that we'll start to see trickle in.
Well, and our, our elementary math should align with the middle school math. Me, that's imperative. Why, you know, it, it makes sense.
Well, the elementary is preparing for the next grade level, the next grade level, being the middle school. So if they're already learning in that manner at the elementary, it's just going to make them that much better, I would think, at the middle school. Which is the whole alignment that has been mentioned a few times.
Lori, I'm the only one up here who ever was a math teacher. At one of leading Cincinnati high schools, had college calculus and just evaluated by request of a college professor EC textbook last week. And I'm sort of into the colors and stuff. I mean, you probably got a drift on that. I would like to compare a sample of the same I would like to compare a sample of the same material from one to the other. Is there any way you could put a little sample packet of the exact same stuff?
I can.
Yeah.
Just to let you know, though, right now, our teachers are getting resources from online. They may be.
You could direct us online, that'd be fine.
What I, what I'm saying, like, right now, the way that they're teaching, and all of those are black and white when they make copies. Our teachers don't print in color. So all the worksheets that are currently being given out in the classrooms are black and white.
In prior terms on the board, we would get actual books to take home to compare, you know, what, what we were going to be voting on.
Yeah, I, I could definitely get you some samples of.
Yeah, that, that, because I'm frankly overwhelmed by everything. I mean, I hear this, I hear this.
Chris, if you want, because some of it is online and you have to have access to the platform, coming in and sitting down with Lori for an hour to actually go through it with her so she can get you in the system and see what's there, you, we'd be.
That might work.
I mean, Lori would be willing to schedule some time to meet with you and show you that.
Yeah, Lori, maybe next week some.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, or, yeah. Maybe somebody else might want to join me too. I have more time than.
You mentioned that it was very expensive to adopt a math program and that we haven't done it in a few years. Why did we start a pilot? You said that we started the pilot late. Was that just COVID?
So we're not, this is not an official math adoption year. We adopt every six years. So when we passed on it three years ago, it really put us in a bind of, we don't have anything for the next six years. We were able to find some money in the curriculum budget so that we can get the pilot for next year. We spent a lot of time on literacy, and that's fantastic. But I also hear our math teachers going, hey, what about us? We really need some resources. We really need some professional development. Our kids really need to grow in math as well. And so that was a priority for me. And so when I was given the green light that said, I can put some money together that we can make this happen, I wanted to make it happen, even if it was a short timeframe. Because if not, then we would have had to wait three more years.
Have you taken one of the lessons and taught it in one of our classes? Anyone in the curriculum department?
I haven't. I've taken from both books, and I've looked through them and walked through them, but I have not, I have not taught them in any of the rooms.
Okay. And the feedback that I've received, not, any teachers have said that they were afraid, just that it wasn't right for the students. That's just, I have not heard that. And the teachers that spoke tonight, are they, do they have more gifted students? More, I know most.
So I think it's, I think it was a variety.
Okay.
So I know that Annie and Michelle came up and said that they had, all the way from IEPs who gifted. Kristen, I know you have a higher level class. Lisa, I don't know the.
I have two. I have one class that both have three kids working doing math, and then I have a class that has two kids who are on IEPs for math, which is other items, so.
Okay. And then the, of the numbers of the teachers that were in your grid, how many, I know you had like five fifth grade at CE, and that, how many of those, if they were given a choice of IM versus illustrative, how many chose, in that, I'd like to know how many chose IM over illustrative? And how many piloted both or one versus the other?
Okay. I could try to get in the information. All of them were encouraged to pilot both. I could find out exactly who.
Okay, I'm just curious how many piloted both, because tonight.
Yeah. And it's, it's hard for me to say which they prefer, because the rubric wasn't designed to say which would you prefer. So I only can base that on their comments. And some people did not write comments, or some people said, I just don't have enough information to truly evaluate both programs or tell you, you know. So I can try to get you some of that information, though.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I wanted to go really quick off of what Nicole was saying, because I think that's interesting, too. The people that were asked to come, we were not asked, and I don't think anybody knew that I was even coming, other than maybe Margot, but, you know, the first person was a second grade teacher, the second person was a second grade teacher. Neither of which piloted Intu Math. It wasn't even available to them. They were able to see the resources. I don't know how long or what effort they took to put into that, but they did not teach it. You also had in there, you know, a principal who obviously is not teaching in the classroom, a math specialist who I know was in the classroom, but again, I'm not sure what involvement she had with Intu Math at all. And so I feel like, again, like, we're skewing the data, because not everybody did Intu Math. Not everybody got to finish Intu Math. People, even again, the fifth grade teacher that spoke, hasn't finished the Intu Math. And so I, again, when I started, I liked illustrative. I did, don't get me wrong. I was like, this is rigorous. This is what we do. We do need more rigorous stuff. And I went to other teachers, and I was showing other teachers in my, in my school, look, look at all this stuff. This is great. But once I did it for two weeks, three weeks, the whole lesson, that was when I said, I'm losing some of my students, right? And that's where I felt that, the whole, like, the why not us, right? It is us. Let's get clear, right? It is us. And Intu Math is rigorous as well. And if you are good teaching, you're doing all of this collaboration and things anyway. Every day my kids are talking. Every day they're going to handle stuff. And maybe, if not every day, most days. And so I just want to, it, it seems as if we're, we're kind of saying, we're not doing these things. And I, and I just want to say, a lot of teachers are doing those things. And that Intu Math does have that collaboration piece. It does have that rigor. My, my only problem I don't love with illustrative is those things that we do need. The practice, the homework, the spiral review, and, oh, we'll make it, we'll make it, we'll make it. Well, I've been around, and I know who's going to make it. That's what it's going to be me. It's going to be the teachers that are working hard and putting in those extra hours and going to the room meetings until after nine o'clock. So I, I don't know. Like I said, obviously, whatever we pick, we're going to work hard. We are, you know, the teachers that are going to work hard are always going to work hard. We are doing all of these things. We do want our kids to do better. That's why we're here. That's why we're, we're fighting for a program that we think is going to be awesome.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to thank you for putting this together. And I'm a numbers person. I'm an analyst for, in the daytime, so that's why I'm asking about the numbers.
I'll get to you, absolutely.
I appreciate it, and thank you all, because you guys are all in it every day, and we really appreciate it.
Absolutely, they are. Absolutely. Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes.
So it sounds, not being a teacher, or math teacher, or not even math centric, there's a lot of collaboration, right? And it seems like this year, a common feedback that we've had from a lot of, a lot of teachers, a lot of buildings, is we have kids that haven't really adapted to come back to school yet. There's behavioral problems. If we have an outburst of that in a room, how does, does that derail this model? Like, more so than any other model?
Sure. I think this model.
And I say that all with, I'm not saying it's, it would be a bad program. To me, that would come down to timing. Do we need to give the kids more time to be back in school, to kind of get back to the regiment of getting up, coming to school, behaving yourselves?
I think you see kids misbehave. My experience as a principal, kids misbehave when they're not engaged in the lesson, or they feel like it's too hard for them and they can't contribute. And I think this program addresses both of those. The students are actively engaged. There's an expectation that you're talking, and because of the way that the problems are set up, they can enter at any time. I think it builds their confidence in math, and I think, once they start getting confidence, the, the impulse to misbehave goes away, because I can do this. I can do this work. I can contribute to this conversation.
Okay.
So I actually believe it supports that.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And as we go through the next week, we'll get an appointment for you. We'll get the information. And if there's stuff that you have questions about, please let me know. We'll get it from Lori in the curriculum department. And if you continue to get questions from people, please forward them to us, so we can make sure that, as Lori goes around building by building, we can make sure we have personal conversations with people who have questions.
Okay. All right. So that brings us to. And just real quick, again, thank you, everyone, for your patience, for your time speaking this evening. I realize it's 9:10 at night. We started at 6:30, but like I said before, it's like, it needs to be done.
Next.
Yep.
So for the next update, I'm just going to be brief. I do want to thank everyone who took the time to be here. Teaching is very personal, and it is passionate. And one of the things that I think is really unique about our district is the passion that our staff have for each other, for what they do, and for the kids that they, and families they impact. And so we know there's passion on both sides of this issue, and we want to make sure that we support people as we move through this decision-making process. Couple of just updates. At Northwest High School, April 7th, they had something that they call Financial Literacy Day, and it was an incredible opportunity where our juniors participated in an event where our credit union came in, COPFCU, and sponsored a game of life. And juniors, all juniors went through that activity, where they rolled dice to figure out how many kids they had, what job they had, how much money they made. They had all these events and stages they went through that gave them a lot of different positive and negative things that happened throughout the course of the game, to really teach them a lot about the financial literacy aspect of moving into adulthood. And outside of that, the counselors arranged for breakout sessions. So when you weren't in that game of life, you were choosing different sessions to go to, to learn about employment opportunities, to learn about college application processes, to learn about military options. And so our counselors, I just want to call it Northwest High School's career day that they did. It was an amazing experience for our juniors, with a lot of self-selection and ability to kind of, for themselves, figure out what their next step might be. And then, just want to thank the board, as people who follow award meetings, and hopefully our following gets bigger, but as those who do, at our previous board meeting in March, there was a conversation around student discipline. And we did have a work session last week where our administrative teams from our buildings and our board got to sit down and have a collaborative conversation, and I've gotten good feedback from that. And I know the administrators appreciated being able to hear from the board's perspective, being able to share their perspective and have that heard, and knowing that we're all working together to make sure that people are getting their problems solved by going back to the kind of closest level to the problem. And so they were very appreciative of that support and of that conversation. I just want to thank the board for taking the time to do that. Okay? And that's all I've got for tonight.
That brings us to board member comments. Chris?
Mark, a couple of things here. I was, I'll start off with my visit to Col Rain last, was it Friday? Thursday, Friday? When you get older, you forget days. And it didn't get off to such a hard, a hot start. I, I got there, I got out of my car and went up to the high school entrance, and there was a young male, I don't know if he was on drugs or what, very aggressive, charged me, was flailing at me. His girlfriend was sitting in the grass, believe it or not, she was sitting in the grass. And I'm like, come on, help me here. And I thought, do I try to get by, or do I back off? And I thought, I'm going to get by. So I squeezed into the door. With that, this male started attacking the door and biting it. Those Canadian geese are mean. I thought that was funny. This, this Canadian, I've never seen a Canadian goose go like this. He attacked that building, and it was just incredible to watch. And we were in awe how they get that term, "goosing you" for a reason. This was one aggressive goose, and not sure what finally happened to him, but his mate was there in the grass, and she just watched. It went very well, my visit there. I was expecting, sort of in the back of my mind, the wild, wild west. It wasn't anything like that. The kids, the one thing that required a lot of direction from the proctors were the hoodies. It seemed like the hoodie kids, young guys, tended to congregate together, and they'd be told to move on and go their separate ways and take the hoodies off. And they sort of did reluctantly. I kind of sensed a little bit of an attitude there. The kids in the cafeteria, no behavioral problems at all. I didn't see any. But yet I was a little concerned why we would have an auxiliary cafeteria in the dining room, or in the gymnasium, an extra dining room in the gymnasium, where kids who were afraid or anxious about eating in the main cafeteria could eat. Because when I was there, and I keep, I keep going back, but kids don't change that much over the years. We had one proctor, and it was always Mr. Doherty, the football coach. You didn't mess with him. I mean, if you did, you'd be on the ground. He, he was the proctor. I think there were five to seven, including police officer, but there was no trouble. And in the dining room area in the cafeteria, there was one proctor there, and there was absolutely no problems. The kids were all friendly. They seemed happy. They followed direction. I left there very impressed and was thinking, the sky is not falling. So that's my report on my visit to Col Rain, and I'm glad I went. Second thing, we've had some work sessions and discussions about the athletic training facility. I even put together kind of a, or this conceptual drawing. And I talked to some of the folks over there at Col Rain. Now, this is not official yet, and I'm a little hesitant to bring it up, but it's a very positive thing. And what is going to happen if all the things fall in the right order, is the boosters are going to donate perhaps a couple hundred thousand dollars, and that weight room, which is the old storage shed, is going to be made much larger, and they're going to put a visiting team locker room in there, referees locker room, expand the weight area, and get the right doors, and a couple hundred thousand dollars will do wonders to that. Now, the big news is, and this is the big if, there is supposedly a benefactor who is talking about a very serious donation. And when I say serious, I'm talking like seven-figure serious. Somebody who has some serious money to donate, a Col Rain graduate. Don't want to say who. It's not official. But with that, we would then build the big building out onto the grass, sort of the soccer city, if you will, over in Springdale, where we could maybe have an indoor running track and batting cages and a huge weight room. You're talking millions of dollars there, but from what I'm hearing, if everything happens, it can be done. But again, first step, phase one, will be the couple hundred thousand dollar addition. And then from there, if that is, if the benefactor does come through, then phase two would be the big building. I, it sounds like, you know, Darrell, you hadn't even heard some of this stuff yet, but they made it sound like it was pretty definite. So we will see, and as a former Col Rain athlete, you know, a rising tide raises all boats. And this is a good thing for the district, and I hope it happens, and I'll keep it posted. And that's it, Mark.
Okay. Jim?
Well, and they need to, before they decide anything, they need to talk to the superintendent and the treasurer.
Well, I think they will do.
See you in contact tomorrow, Jim.
You're not going to come out there Saturday, and there's going to be bulldozers out there.
You never know.
But, but you never know. But I will tell you this, that Nicole, you sent me that picture, I think you sent us all, the one from that smaller district up near Finley. And this is a 1,600 student school district, and I don't know who their benefactor was, but talk about some serious money, because that thing is beautiful.
Get it coming in.
Tell you what, if, apparently, it's just not that significant to our benefactor, but we shall see.
Okay. Just two quick things. I just wanted to thank the kids who got up and spoke tonight. They were excellent. And that's, I mean, I'd love seeing that when you got kids come. And the teachers, all that spoke, hey, you guys are passionate about it. I get it. And I just appreciate that, and Lori, for your presentation. And that's it. Since we have to go to executive session, so it is getting kind of late, so.
I'll keep it short.
It's not stopping me. I'd like to thank Darrell and all the administrators that met with us last week. with us last week. I think that was foundational and we've got hopefully a lot of progress coming soon. I would like to encourage any staff member or parent that has an issue to please reach out to their administrators, Darrell, you know, just to express those concerns and even share positives that you see every day. I'd like to thank Trey and Karen and Colin for being here and to Patrick. I know he's very passionate about the students as well, Ruby, Aria and Nolly. And then I did tell Chris, if we do away with hoodies, I will have three boys that have nothing else to wear. So please do not go that way. And I'd like to thank all the teachers that spoke. I, in the corporate world, it would be very difficult to stand up and speak my mind about something that, you know, that may not be the way things are going. And, and also the teachers that came and spoke for the curriculum. And that is all. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank Ruby, Aria and Nolly for speaking, coming with, from Stewo Elementary. And thank you to all the teachers that spoke this evening. Really do appreciate it. Appreciate you coming forward and, you know, being able to speak out like that. I think that comes a lot with, thank you Dave Frye for meeting with Mark, myself and Darrell last week. And hopefully you, you know, get away from our meeting with, you know, tools to further help yourself. And I think that, you know, speaks a lot to that we want to hear from the teachers and hear from the staff and get positive, you know, positive, negative, whatever the feedback may be. And that they can feel comfortable doing so. And I appreciate that. Thank you. Just keep it short. For the business aspect.
First, if my calendar is correct, which it could very possibly be wrong, this will be our last board meeting before the seniors are done, right?
Yeah, it's Friday.
Yeah. So there's a lot of stuff coming up for that. A lot of awards. And they're coming down homestretch, so this will be fun. I have a daughter that is graduating, so this will be fun to watch this happen. Again, just thank Trey, Karen and Colin and Patrick for coming. The highlight of these meetings are always the kids. That's what we're all here for to begin with. I did want to kind of add to what Darrell and these guys said. Last Thursday, we had a work session with nearly all of the buildings represented with this leadership, principal leadership. We had a very collaborative discussion. We had representatives from each level, elementary, middle school and high school speak to processes for discipline and kind of the state of the union address, if you will. And then the board had an opportunity to share the things that are coming back to them. All in all, it was a very collaborative conversation. We talked about things that we get that staff and people are fearful of as far as coming to speak and speaking up and sharing their concerns and their passions. You know, the board collectively supports our entire district, whether that be staff, teachers, students, parents and our district administration. And I'm hopeful after this work that it is foundational in moving forward as we finish this year and laying a good footwork for next year. And I also wanted to thank Dave Frye for meeting with Matt and I and Darrell. It's, it's a very atypical meeting, I get, from what I understand. But I thought it was, it was necessary because we're finding out things that we just didn't know. And the one thing that I've, I've taken over the last couple of weeks is we are all on the same team. We're just all kind of sometimes at times moving in different directions and we're not taking the time to kind of hear each other. People are incredibly passionate when it comes to kids. And if we can focus our energy, I'm sure we can move the needle even stronger than we already have. So Darrell, I appreciate you being open for all these. I think that is about it for me. Again, thanks for coming to participate, our teachers on both sides of this equation for this curriculum. And that's it for me. Darrell, do you want to bring us into the executive session?
The superintendent recommends a board of education approve the motion to move into executive session as listed, which would be to conference with an attorney concerning disputes that are subject to pending or imminent court action as well as the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official.
So moved. Second. Someone's not voted.
Oh.
Chris.
Sorry about that, Mark.
All right, we've got four out.
Put me down as a verbal yes. Baby verbal yes. Things got to reboot up.
Yeah, it freezes everything up.